I love the answer.
Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for October 3, 2016, back to order. We started this meeting in executive session where we discussed collective bargaining in specifically about a job description for a department, Police Department Record Specialist Job Description. We did make a vote and we will approve that in the consent agenda. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video and audio taping this public meeting as well as broadcasting. In addition, anyone in the audience that intends to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Hearing none, could you please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, anyone for weekly briefing? Onto public comments and announcements. First, we have the awarding of plaques for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce Hometown Parade winners. Jeremy?
Greetings. Thank you for the opportunity. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had our second annual Harwich Hometown Parade, which took place Cranberry Festival weekend. It was a good turnout, good showing all around, and everybody had a great time. What we want to do is just announce a few of the winners of the participants. And there's four. So I'll be quick because I know you have a full agenda. So first, the overall best award goes to Good Times Ice Cream, and we have Nikki Wait here. The Most Town Spirit There he is. Goes to the Harwich Town Band. Ah, rrr. Okay. The 2016 Hometown Parade Funniest Entry goes to the Mad Minnow Bar and Restaurant. And last but not least, Best Youth Participation. It's something that we encouraged greatly throughout the event, as well as, I think, throughout Cranberry Festival, goes to the Harwich Cranberry Festival, Michelle Resnicki, and then Ed and Shannon McManus. But congratulations. We know that. So again, we had a great parade, and we're looking forward to continuing on with other activities and stuff.
Thank you, Jeremy. On behalf of the town, thank you very much for the great parade.
And of course, we couldn't have done it without the police and the fire who also brought in our grand marshal, so.
Next up for public comments and announcement? Jeremy and Rob?
One more thing. We've got some events coming up this weekend. I'm going to let Rob start with the festivities on Saturday, October 8.
Good evening. Rob Mador, Bridges for the Fallen, Harwich Conservation Commission. This coming weekend, Saturday, October 8, at 10 o'clock at the Park and Ride, we are dedicating a bridge to Ralph Wallace Burns. I think a lot of people here are familiar with Skip Burns, who taught in Harwich for 30-plus years. Skip made the request for his dad. Skip never met his dad, and Skip passed away a couple of weeks after he made the request. So really important bridge on many levels. Lots of different tricks up my sleeve for the event, lots of great speakers, and I highly encourage anyone who wants to attend to try to get to Cape Cod Tech around 8:30, where they're going to have a shuttle service over to the Park and Ride parking lot. It's going to be a lot of people there, so try to get there early if you possibly can.
Great. Thank you, Rob. And it starts at 10 o'clock, exit 10.
10 o'clock sharp. There's timed activities that are going on, so.
And what's, you mentioned today when I spoke to you, the event at the Fire Department, or the starting of this event at the Fire Department?
Yeah, there's a little private ceremony at the Fire Department for the Burns family, where we're raising the POW flag with the group Rolling Thunder, which Rolling Thunder is basically the national group that stands behind the POW MIA flag, and their mission is basically making sure that people are not forgotten in their sacrifice.
And that's open to the public as well, 8:30?
That is open to the public, but the problem with the public going there is the timing of the event is so close to the actual dedication that people that go to the event at the fire station will then have to go to the Cape Cod Tech and get ferried over, and there's a good chance they're going to miss the beginning of the ceremony. So we're asking that the ceremony at the fire station, we're trying to keep it really small to just family only.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jeremy?
So the dedication takes place from 10 to noon at the Exit 10 Park and Ride, and then everybody afterwards is invited to the, back to the tech school. We're going to have hot dogs and hamburgers. The Mad Minnow Food Cart will be there. Don't know if it'll be in pirate costume or not, but we'll have hot dogs, hamburgers, and stuff that will be available. And then we have Link Montana, and we've got some games and all kinds of stuff to just kind of have some fun. We know the Burns family would have liked it. So we've got those activities going on, and it'll be a good time. And that goes till about 3:00.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comments and announcements? Moving on to the consent agenda, we will be pulling E. off the consent agenda tonight and tabling it for the time being. Julie?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes, September 19, 2016, regular session. B, approve the contract with Brown, Linquist, Finuccio, and Raybor Architects for Sacro Tucket Landside Project. C, approve the contract with Lynch-Melloy Marini LLP for auditing services for FY '16. D, approve the contract with East Coast Seal Coating for tennis court resurfacing at Brooks Park. F, approve job description for Record Specialist at Police Department. G, approve Town Administrator's Recommendations on Park's Entertainment License.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any comments? Chris, on the auditing services for FY '16, can we add, it wasn't in the contract, to add a presentation to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee when that's complete?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We'll make that note.
Great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, public hearing and presentations. Onto the next in our series of annual meetings. First, we'll start with the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Larry Brophy, and I'm here tonight as Chairman of the Planning Board. It'll be brief unless you want a really lengthy one. The Planning Board and Planning Department's work is divided into two functions, regulatory and planning and review. The regulatory section is relatively straightforward. In 2016, there were the following submissions. There was two, seven site plan reviews, one special permit, one waiver of a site plan review, two approval-not-required subdivisions, the definitive subdivision, one, a definitive plan with a preliminary, a definitive plan with preliminary, four of those, a definitive plan with modifications, three of those, a definitive plan with a panhandle, hopefully I don't have to explain that one, and five covenant releases. The second part of the Planning Department's mandate is a little more different to quantify. However, some of the areas currently being reviewed are as follows. In 1916, oh, that would be a long time ago, in 2016, litigation procedures were successfully concluded between Harwich and Cumberland Farms with a mutually agreeable settlement, and they'll be starting construction this month, from what I understand. It will be something to look forward to there. Work continued on the East Harwich zoning amendment with a submission to the Board of Selectmen. The Planning Board is looking forward to moving this rezoning amendment forward by, again, working with the East Harwich residents, the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning Board to see if we can come to a mutually satisfactory agreement. Work will continue on the creation of workforce housing and the ultimate reuse of the middle school, the two of which are not related. Workforce housing and the middle school are two separate items. The Route 28 Planning Initiative was completed, will be reviewed and recalibrated to match the timetable for the Sacro Tucket Harbor improvements on the water and land side of the harbor. Ideally, some of the physical improvements on Route 28 can be coordinated with the construction schedule currently anticipated for the fall and winter of 2017, 18. Finally, the Planning Board continues to keep open lines of communication with other Harwich committees by coordinating with liaisons as follows. The wastewater implementation is Peter DeBaca. It seems to keep Peter busy. Capital Outlay is Joe McParland. The Trails Committee is Alan Peterson. Community Preservation, Peter DeBaca and Jim Atkinson. And Sacro Tucket Harbor is Larry Brophy, me. And right now, we'll continue to remain proactive and try to stay up to date on innovations and updates in land use planning in Harwich and work with our new town planner, who starts, from what I understand, the end of this month. So if there's any questions, I'd be delighted to answer them.
You tell us, we did just appoint a new town planner?
That would be Ms. Sabatino.
Excellent. When does she start?
31st.
Halloween.
Halloween. Oh, we missed the welcoming committee, but.
And yeah, who else do you have here from your committee?
I don't think there's anyone.
Left you alone tonight?
They're so busy with other meetings, they couldn't make it. Anything else?
Comments from the board? Questions from the board? No, Peter?
No.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up is Zoning Board of Appeals. No one here from Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, next up is, we have an update on Cape Cod Commission, Paul Nizwitzki and Jack Units. Hey, Paul.
Hello.
Jack?
Good evening. How are you? Good evening. For the record, I'm Paul Nizwitzki, Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, and I have the pleasure tonight, to those of you that haven't met our new county administrator, to introduce you to Jack Units. Jack is someone that I've known by reputation for a long time, former Mayor Brockton, and he's been on board since January with the county, and we've been working closely together. So the commission usually makes these annual updates, comes around and says, I come around to try to get every board and say hello, and it was Jack's idea to come together so that we could talk about a lot of the programs that we are working on together. So from the commission's perspective, we've just finished the implementation of the first year of the 208 report. Watershed reports are in. We're working with DEP on those, and we continue to work with the towns going forward. Up next is the Regional Policy Plan Review. We began that last January, put together a group of stakeholders, and they helped us sort of clarify some of the issues that they'd like us to look at in the existing regional policy plan as we make some of the suggested changes going forward. So it's important, I think, to get out to all 15 boards of selectmen to let them know that we're starting that process right now. The regional policy plan, as the county ordinance, has within it minimum performance standards so that any project reviewed by the Cape Cod Commission is held to those standards. So to the extent that those MPSs are working or not working, now is the time to sort of enter that discussion with us as we get ready to revamp the regional policy plan. We made some major revisions over five years ago, and I think we're going to, we're ready to take the next step. So there'll be, from a traditional perspective, a discussion about activity centers in towns. So I think you want to, you'll want to pay attention as we sort of go through that. And once we have a draft, we'll be back and to make more specific presentations to the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen. But there are two issue areas that are emerging that we haven't really focused on as part of the regional policy plan in the past. One of them, you might guess, is capital planning, sort of an outgrowth of the wastewater planning, but there does seem to be an opportunity to have the towns save a lot of money by coordinating some of the capital planning, whether it's transportation water or wastewater going forward. So just facilitating that discussion and maybe building some tools that'll make some of those decisions easier for you to make on a local level is where we would go there. But the big issue that's been emerging, and there does seem to be a regional consensus on this issue, is housing. So we will be taking a look at housing in a way that we haven't before. The commission is prescribed to look at issues of affordable housing on a regional basis. To date, we've done that primarily by running the home program for the Cape, which is a great program, but it's an operational program. And so to some extent, that constrained our ability to think more globally and comprehensively about housing in general and housing beyond just the state definition of affordable housing. As you may know, 35% of the housing stock collectively in the region are second homes, and that ranges from a high of 71% in Truro to a low of 17% in Sandwich. And so that, more than anything else, when you look at the Cape Cod economy, starts to twist that market on the top. So I think we have done some sort of extensive work on the Cape economy and on some of the housing issues. It also appears that there are some big subregional differences in the housing challenges. So the regional policy plan isn't going to find one piece of magic that will address all of these ills. But I think we can come up with a couple of new, somewhat innovative strategies, and some of them will have more applicability in certain subregions than others. So I think it's an interesting time, and it will be an interesting document when we get to that point. I mentioned the home program. One of the first things we did when Jack came on board is we transferred that home program to Barnstable County's Human Services Department. They run the continuum of care and some other programs that are like that. The home program was really designed to be run in more urban areas where there are like programs, so there can be a shared administrative efficiency in running those programs. So that transfer has worked really well. And so we see partnering with the county on a number of issues, from housing to regional capital, outlays, wastewater. But I'm going to allow Jack to sort of talk about his first eight months or so on the job, and I'm sure he's going to touch on some of those issues, and I'll be here to answer any questions you might have after.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. What I'm going to talk about obviously starts with the county having a very strong financial situation, something that we're working to get achieved right now. We're not on the edge of a cliff by any means, but we do need to bring it home and to start planning fiscally like we were. We need to be a lot more prudent with how we run our county, and we have to be a lot more fiscally objective in how we administer the grants, both with our county partners and with the state and federal government. That's what we're putting into play right now. We're managing very, very conservatively, and we're making sure that we have cost recovery systems in place for most of the work that we do, both countywide and on our state and federal grants. We will get itself back to a point where we can actually go to bond again. We haven't done that since 1996, so that would be a major achievement for the county, and we expect to be there by next May. Now, with that in mind, in addition to the housing situation that we're hearing as Paul and I go across the county, we're hearing a lot about dredge. I can tell you, Commissioner Kokounis, Paul and I, and Wayne have had some very serious talks about how we can improve dredge services across the county. Just last week down in Wellfleet, you know, it was almost a point-blank question saying, can we partner on cleaning Wellfleet Harbor? To do that, we have to get a silt dredge. Can we do that? Absolutely. And we're going to start working on that overnight, in political terms, meaning in the next several months. In terms of, in terms of the pond dredges, something that Leo has, Leo Kokounis has been pushing us to look into for a while, Paul's on board with that. Because of the estuary studies that the Cape Cod Commission have done, we're beginning to realize how important pond dredges are, especially with this outlet to the bays and harbors of the Cape. That could be a important part of our dredge program, but we're hearing it everywhere we go, from Ashby to Truro, the importance of expanding the dredge program. And that should be a no-brainer if we can put the contracts together first, because we're really just talking about revenue anticipation notes at that point. So in terms of going after both local seaport grants and federal grants, we have to start working with the towns in partnership. Hopefully, towns will be prudent enough to go out and get long-term permits that deal with these complex issues, so it's not permit-to-permit and all the delays that ensue from that. And we'll be able to go out and start to find the money to provide those services across the county. Paul mentioned humbly the home program, which actually began under the Cape Cod Commission nine years ago. And since that time, $14 million have been invested in the creation of 1,300 affordable units across the Cape. These are the kind of programs we want to continue, working in partnership with the commission. And once the agenda gets defined by each community as to how they want that money to go, we want to be sure that we have the money available to be your partners in that. He also touched on the septic system. I'm pleased to announce today that George Herfelter has voluntarily transferred himself to run the innovative test center out at the Otis Air Base, to run that full-time now. Those are both proprietary and non-proprietary test systems that are being tested out there, and there's two dozen of them at least. With any kind of luck, we'll be actually in the ground in some of the towns as quickly as we can, and actually testing some of the sites that will be selected, in part through the 208 program, but mostly through the local dictation regarding establishing whether or not these systems are going to be feasible, because if they are feasible, they're going to be affordable. And there's no solution, like an affordable solution, to our problems across the Cape in terms of dealing with this issue. The Extension Service has been a huge partner with Harwich. Remember, we filed for the grant last summer that led to 400,000 clam seedlings being distributed to Harwich. We continue to do estuary testing of shellfish along the Herring River, and we continue to work for grants in partnership with Harwich to deal with those kind of issues along the Herring River, and we will continue to do so. There are a number of other important things we'll be doing at the end of this week. Of course, we'll all be teamed up, keeping a look on the Caribbean and trying to figure out what's going to happen next. But we do have our emergency management team that will lock in if necessary on Friday afternoon. That conference call, we'll have over 90 partners on it across the Cape, including all the utilities, the Coast Guard, and everybody else that needs to be in play should something happen. Sean O'Brien, who has stepped up to take over as head of the Health Department, will continue to manage all our emergency management systems. There won't be any change or break in that action going forward. All in all, we feel pretty positive about where the county's going. We're working together as a team. We've made huge progress on reining in some of the spending and bringing back a little more of the confidence in the system that we used to have. We're continuing to do that. We have work to do internally regarding some of our own internal contracts, let alone the contracts we have outside. But these are easy fixes. It just takes patience. It takes persistence, and it takes a will to do it right, and I think we have that. So we expect to be a good partner for you. And the thing that Paul and I want to, the biggest reason we wanted to be out here is to make sure that we know what you're thinking. We want to know what's on your mind. We want to know what we can do better and what we can do to help going forward. We're always there for you, so please don't hesitate, whether it's through Chris or any of you yourselves individually. Don't hesitate to call us and let us know what you're thinking, and if there's a way to partner, we'll find it, and we'll do it with you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Thank you for the updates. Angelo, questions?
Oh, fine.
Julie?
In terms of collaboration, are you working together with the towns for those grants? That would be, you know, helpful.
We just, we just had a grant application that came to the end, and we thought for sure, we felt pretty confident we were going to succeed in it. And we made one decision along the way that we shouldn't have made. We decided to go it along. If we had a town for a partner, I think we would have gone a lot further. I think the general consensus in DC now, especially in the bureaucratic world, is to look for grants that collaborate with others. Look for grants that are going to be, have a regional impact. And even though our grant would have had a regional impact, we didn't have a collaborating partner. So henceforth, I think you'll always see us going after these grants with a local partner, whether it's from our Human Services Department, or Extension Department, or our Science and Health Department. I think it makes all the sense in the world. So yeah, absolutely. And I think it would give us a lot of, a lot more up on the positive side, if we have somebody to sign on and say, yeah, we want them, and we want, here's what we want to do together.
And from the town perspective, hopefully, town departments are aware that, can they go to you for help with writing these grants?
Yes. Yeah, exactly.
All set, Julie?
Yep.
Did you know?
Almost up. Thank you.
Peter?
Jack, it's good to see another Brockton person here, coming over the bridge, if you will. I spent my adolescent years there, so, you know.
We're still growing up, Peter. I'm still growing up.
Me too. And back then, we didn't know about dredging, because there's nothing to dredge in Brockton, if you will. The concept of a freshwater dredge, Leo, I'd like to hear about this sometime, but assuming it has some, you know, something to do with just water flow, but, you know, in the town of Harwich, as well as a lot of other towns, we're interested in what's going on in our freshwater ponds. A lot of the efforts on wastewater on our part has been towards the estuaries, and we haven't spent that much time, other than throwing alum, friends laying a long pond, that type of thing, and actually trying to clean those things up. So it'll be fascinating to know if having any dredging done associated with a freshwater body has anything to do with the phosphorus and cleaning that up and that type of thing. So I'd love to hear back from that at some point in time by the folks who are involved with it, I guess is the way to say it.
Well, you know, on one of our field trips, and you learn a lot from field trips, Leo dropped me at the top of the Herring River, where it's so overgrown, you wouldn't know you have a river next to Queen Anne Road.
Yeah.
And he's right. These are the kind of things we got to pay attention to. The top of a river is just as important as the bottom of the river, when you talk about controlling vegetation and nitrates and phosphates and letting the fish breed again, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a whole system, starting along pond, going through a bunch of ponds and all the way, you know, Herring River, et cetera, et cetera. And for us, it's a whole system that we need to work on.
And if we have to change the Rivers Act to deal with these kind of issues, we start to work in that direction. I think we have a delegation now that's very committed to these kind of things. And the work that the Cape Cod Commission has done over the last three years has given us more data than we'll ever need to convince the legislative body that these changes might be the right thing to do at this time.
Good. Thank you. Welcome aboard, bud.
Great. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for the update. Next up is a joint meeting with Monomoy Regional School District and the Finance Committee to discuss enrollment by class and demographics, including a five-year projection of the same. Yes? Hey, Brian? Welcome.
Hey, Mike. How are you, Brian?
Good. How are you?
Good.
So with us, we have Scott Carpenter, the Superintendent of Monomoy Regional School District, Brian Whittaker, who is the Chairman of the School Committee, and our Finance Committee, four members of our Finance Committee. Oh, we have more. And Andy Gould is here, I imagine, if we have any questions for Andy. Thank you. Scott, I'm going to let you start.
Sure. With us, we also have Terry Russell from the Monomoy Regional School Committee and my business manager, Katie Iscernio. Just to put some preface to this, I think every year when we come right around the beginning of October, it's one of those almost too soon to go and share. In fact, for schools, enrollment numbers- In fact, for schools, enrollment numbers are dictated on October 1 enrollments. So technically, today is the day that the schools are reporting to Central Office to report back to the state as to what the enrollment looks like for the school district. Your assessments are ultimately based on foundation enrollments, not October 1 enrollments, and they're different. You know, so foundation enrollments look at all of the children that live in Harwich and Chatham that attend public schools that we are financially responsible for. So students that attend Lighthouse Charter, Sturgis, School Choice to DY, Nauset, Barnstable, they would all be included in that foundation enrollment number. And in my, in our next presentation before you, we'll probably have the numbers back from all of the schools that have children. So one of the things I generally do, not in October, but usually in November, I'm able to go and report back to you, you know, how many students are at Nauset, how many students are at Sturgis and Lighthouse. We don't have that number yet, because those entities haven't reported out to the state. So we, you know, so we don't have an accounting of where all of the children are. So we have, and for FY17, you'll notice at the bottom of the page, there are estimates based on where students were last year and what the changes are. So this is what I think is going to be, but it may shift a little bit. But let's kind of, in terms of projections and sort of the bottom line, on the graph that I've provided you is the, what the Department of Ed says has been our foundation enrollment since the district has come together. And you'll notice that there is a gradual, over the last five years, a gradual downward trend in foundation enrollment, which is, meaning there's fewer kids in Chatham and Harwich over the last five years. So over the last five years, our foundation enrollment, just the children attending public schools, not necessarily attending Monomoy, just attending public schools, period, is down by about 5%. In terms of looking forward, what does that mean for us as Harwich and Chatham, and what, how should that impact? The next graph might give you a little hint to some of the complexities of that. So the next graph is just what are the resident enrollment? You know, so the children living in Harwich and Chatham that are attending kindergarten, and you'll notice it looks very much like a W. So it's, you know, so since the beginning of this district, it's tracked down two years, it's tracked up two years. It seems to be holding relatively stable in the 130 to 135 range. If we were to project that forward, and say if we have a cohort of roughly 135 students per year over the next 13 years, as a foundation enrollment looking off into the future, it would cause this foundation enrollment graph to shift from where we currently are hovering at around 18, just below 1840, and it would probably take it to just about 1820 or so. So it's, we're going, we should still be hovering in, you know, above 1800, but right in that range, just looking over the long haul. And that's, again, looking at what those kindergarten populations have been. I think some of the nice things about our towns is, as we've seen, a number of young families that have been coming into our towns, and I think the important thing is to keep the schools strong. You know, there are, you know, there are some good indications that some things are positive and happening on the, and there are some areas that we clearly have to work on. If we flip, so on the front page here is, is what would be our October 1 numbers for FY17? This is the enrollments that we have right now. Our enrollment within the district is down this year, this year over last year. So we had last year, at this point in time, nineteen hundred and sixty-six students enrolled in our schools. Those enrollments would include School Choice students and students from Harwich and Chatham. At this point, we see eighteen hundred and ninety-six students enrolled in the district. On the back of that page, I have, what I refer to it as a sort of a retention matrix, just looking at where has enrollment changed, where are we seeing, you know, the loss, the greatest loss of students? You'll notice that the greatest loss of students that we see happens between fifth and sixth grade, and that's usually when students look at the middle school and opt often for Lighthouse Charter School. So we see a loss at sixth grade. The Harwich and Chatham students that we see leaving us, at least in this past year, for, you know, based on this year's October 1 numbers, is slightly higher, about five students more than it was in the previous year. But it's, five students, it's hard to say if that's, if there's a trend happening one way or the other, because, you know, siblings get priorities, so whether or not there's just happened to be more siblings. The oddity that we have to kind of wrestle with is, is what happened with the School Choice students? Did a number of them also get into Lighthouse Charter, or did they, you know, did they opt back to their districts? It's not just Lighthouse Charter that we see lost to on that year, it's some students will opt for Nauset Middle School. You know, so we don't have those numbers yet to know what direction each is taking. So that's the area that, you know, that we have our concern in. Area of, that's positive despite how you look at the numbers. If you look at grade nine, you'll notice that there's a loss as we move from eighth grade at the high school, because the high school includes eighth grade to ninth grade. We see 25 fewer students in ninth grade. That's actually an improvement over past years. So, you know, so we're seeing fewer students leaving us. Now, some of those each year leave us for the tech school, and, you know, there are eighth graders that, you know, that Cape Tech is the right choice for them, and their families choose that. And that typically, for our communities, is around a dozen students each year. And that leaves, you know, there's, that other 13 students that are choosing to change then are split between Sturgis and Nauset. But the number that we're actually seeing, that, based on these numbers, heading from us to Nauset, has decreased greatly in that high school year. So we still need to go and look at the program at the middle school and keeping our families with us at the middle school. At the high school, we've seen a lot of strides in terms of more families staying with us. So that's just kind of a quick snapshot. There's, you know, I have, for your reading pleasure, if you want, I have the same sort of grid and matrix for every year since regionalization that you can go and look at, you know, what was the enrollment, what were the retention by grades, but you'll see that same sort of trend at, you know, at that movement of fifth to sixth grade, and the movement for eighth to ninth, where we see the greatest losses. You know, the other thing to notice that, with FY17, if you just look down that column, at all the different grade levels, there's, you know, there's one grade level that you're seeing families that seem to be moving into the district and others that are moving out. It does speak somewhat to some of the movements that we're seeing, you know, the magnitude of movements that are happening in and out of our communities over the past year.
Thank you, Scott. Brian, did you want to add anything?
Just a couple of things. I would point out that, you know, we continue to have, we're not going to generally change the amount of students that are going off to the tech school. That's been a standard, that's been a standard practice, has been expected for some years and continue to be expected. Obviously, the effect of the charter schools is significant. Might be something to consider when you're looking at ballot question two. But, you know, we continue to have fairly steady flow of students coming in, students going out. So I think that by and large, the system is running fairly well in terms of retention of students.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Let's start, Jack. Start with the Finance Committee. If you have questions, we'll start with...
I don't. We're sort of in the process.
Great.
Actually, if I could respond to the fact, what you said about early in the process, I would, as Scott has said, it's too early for us to know our foundation enrollment, which means it's too early for us to tell you what percentage of the budget's going to be picked up by Harwich and which is picked up by Chatham. I understand that you, everybody wants to start working on next year's budget as quickly as possible, and I'm assuming that the main reason you want to know about the enrollment has to do with budget planning, but it might be better to have us come in a little bit later next year in the budget process, so that we actually have solid numbers as opposed to estimated numbers. Of course, our numbers don't count until the state tells us they're real, so.
Can you just take a minute to explain to people the difference from a taxpayer point of view, not from the school's point of view, but from a taxpayer point of view, what a child going to a charter school versus going to the public school, what difference that is? Can you take the time to just explain?
The dollar amount?
Taxpayer pays the same amount, no matter which school they go to. Is that correct, or isn't that correct? If you could explain that.
The, well, over the last few years, the average, when a student lives in Harwich or Chatham and goes to a School Choice school, the towns send with them approximately $5,000 on average, but the average number has been to the other district. But of course, we get the same amount for kids coming in from other districts. The, I believe last year, the amount that Harwich and Chatham taxpayers would have to send to the charter schools averages closer to $15,000 per student, which obviously is a much bigger hit on our budget and your tax dollars.
Is that because of the funding formula?
Exactly. That's how the charter schools are allowed to fund their budget based upon the enrollment and based upon the amount that the state pays or doesn't pay.
In our case, doesn't pay.
Right.
No, I just think changes to the funding formula is just as important as question two, to Harwich. One of our members in the audience, McManus, you got anything? No? On your FY17 retention page, you're back in the first...
Angelo, could you, Angelo, could you give Jack your mic?
Thank you.
On this FY17 retention page, one of the things I would note is that 14 out of the 21 classifications you have on that page are down, two-thirds are down. And so the question I have is, with all we have to offer, what are we going to do next and differently to see if we can't turn these numbers around, A, and a little bit faster, B?
Well, I agree, and I think the key, the key is the strength of the program. So one of the things that, you know, that we will, or have put in place for this year is a new math curriculum, K through seven. And, you know, so if you look at testing data, and I'll gladly bring to the next presentation, I will be doing a presentation before our School Committee at the next meeting on the MCAS and Park Testing, which, you know, has some areas that we clearly can improve in. You know, I want to make sure that what we're doing is offering the best program we can for our families. And I think that if we want to see our numbers look solid, and we want to see families coming not just to us by choice, but preferably to us, you know, to us in terms of where they choose to reside, it helps to have the schools be as strong as we can. And, you know, having the testing results back, you know, back that up. So, you know, the hope is that by moving forward a new math curriculum in the kindergarten through seventh grade years, that we're going to see more of our students ready for algebra as eighth graders, geometry as ninth graders, and those that want and are ready for calculus as seniors. And the same, you know, the same way to see, you know, we have initiatives on the English Language Arts in the lower grade levels. That's, again, to bolster the program at the elementary school, and to see that middle school strengthen, because I think we've seen a lot of great strides happen at the high school, and some of the growth data that I'll be presenting at the, on our MCAS numbers in 10th grade at the high school. Our high school students between eighth and 10th grade have the highest growth in terms of learning more per year than other districts and charter schools in the Cape. And to see that happen, you know, across, you know, across the board, not just to see that great growth happening at the high school.
Do you, Dr. Carpenter, have goals around enrollment and retention that are shared with the Board, and are they in agreement with those kind of goals that you've set?
We haven't set, we haven't set goals for, at least formal goals for enrollment and retention as goals. I think on my end, my long-stated goal is to see as many of the families from Harwich and Chatham choosing Monomoy. That's, you know, for me, it's to see the numbers tick down and down, and as I said, it's completely understandable that we're going to see some students leaving between eighth and ninth grade for Cape Tech. Fully support, you know, fully support that. It's a great program. But, you know, but to see, have families see our high school as having as strong an academic program and as strong an extracurricular and athletic program, to see our middle school families seeing us as a district that has as strong a program in terms of academics as a charter school, and I think the MCAS numbers would support that, and there's room for growth.
Thank you, Jack. I'm not sure I can yell.
You'll have to jump.
My follow-up question, as you've described, Scott, competitive environment, which we're trying to out, compete with other schools to bring students in. My follow-up question then is, what's it look like Cape Y in terms of enrollment? Are we, is going down some, is that true with Cape Y, or is it...
So the foundation enrollment graph that we started with is the trend that Cape Cod has had for the last decade, and it continues in the last, in the last five years. You know, so I think the, I think it's, it's not, you know, getting to Jack's question, it's, the focus has been, how can we keep our families from Harwich and Chatham with us? And I think, you know, the challenge is not, how do we pull in families from other communities, but how do we, you know, how do we make sure the families that we have are seeing our program as the best?
And I think it's a reasonable point. Best case, we could still be declining in Monomoy, because that's where the Cape is going.
Right. Yeah, and again, I think the hopeful or optimistic numbers is that if you look at our kindergarten enrollments, you know, the last several years, we seem to be relatively stable in our communities when it comes to those lower grade levels, which, you know, which if you, you know, the bubble, at the moment, the bubble is right around, right around the fourth, fifth grades in the district. But what's behind it isn't a huge drop-off from that bubble, that, you know, so the bubble is in the 140s, the grade levels in kindergarten behind it are in the 130, you know, 135 or so. So at least we're seeing that number ideally tracking forward. The question is, will those numbers choose us, or charter, or choice out someplace else? And if they see us, you know, choosing us, you know, that has our high school, you know, still strong as it is today, and, but it's just, again, making sure the program has the family sticking with us.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Janelle?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Have you tracked at all the number of applicants from the fifth grade at Monomoy to the charter school, to Lighthouse Charter School over the last couple of years, since it has moved to Harwich? Do you find that more Monomoy students are maybe making the applications than previous years?
You know, I will have to ask Paul Niles, who runs the charter school, about the applicants. We get the information on who wins the lottery, but I don't, I don't have the information on what the applicant pool looks like. That's a great question, I'll look into that.
It seems to be, my daughter's in fifth grade, and she's already talking about the charter school, whereas in years past, I don't feel like the fifth graders talked about it quite as much, so I think the proximity has changed the expectation for them. Another couple of questions. Are you finding any high school dropouts?
The high school, the high school dropouts are, there are some.
Yeah.
But relative, relatively small. Again, I don't, I didn't bring the... Again, I don't, I didn't bring the, the dropout information, but gladly we'll bring that to the, to the next meeting. Yeah, it's, you know, for me, one, you know, one dropout is too, is one too many. And things that we do well and that we're continuing to work on even today. We have a program at the high school that George Sappel runs, something we call the Alternative Learning Program. Because even though we're a small high school, for some students, it's, it's still larger than, than what they would optimally do well in. And George's program is, is very contained. The students who go into that program have a great, they were, I think, on the verge of potentially dropping out. And his program does a great job in getting those students to the point that they're getting that Monomoy, that Monomoy diploma. Today, I was meeting with, with one of the, Bill Fisher, one of the former superintendents at Cape Tech, looking at how we might be able to collaborate with Cape Tech on having, having those students get a vocational experience while being with us. And, you know, again, it might, it might mean that in future years, maybe, you know, maybe they're half hours, half, half Cape Tech, you know, anything that we can do to have students that are struggling in, in a typical college preparatory high school to find ways to be successful and not just be successful, but to come out with either college readiness or career readiness.
One more question. As Jack said, the majority of these numbers are negative on the retention this year. And I'm wondering, is there any data as far as families actually moving out of Harwich and Chatham and that being a reason why? So therefore tying it into more social issues such as housing?
I, we're doing the research on the Octum or One numbers, so at our next presentation, we can come back with a sort of, hopefully an itemized on the, you know, those families that left, why? And, you know, and is it, is it housing? Is it, you know, is it better school? Is it job related, unrelated to housing?
Thank you.
But good questions.
Thank you, Scott. Peter?
Thanks for bringing the data to us, we appreciate it. Just a clarification, the first sheet for FY '17. Harwich Elementary School, is the total enrollment there 568 in the school? And what's the capacity of that school? Do you know?
Well, I, I think it's, I, so...
400 is not a good answer, but I mean...
It's, we have the, so in terms of, if you look at it as class size, I, so...
Saying the school was built for how many kids? I don't know. I mean, just like with the, with Monomoy, it looks like it has 610 students, right? And wasn't that built for 750? Is that the, do I remember that right? Maybe I'm wrong. Is that correct?
Roughly correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the high school was built for a, an occupancy at 700 is what they had designed it for, I think.
So, so we don't have a capacity problem in, in the facilities, is that right? I mean...
No.
Okay. And is there anything that our facilities really lack at this point in time? I mean, I think you've done a great job, obviously you have a new high school, but, you know, the elementary school was rehabbed not that long ago, but some time ago. And Chatham Elementary, I know, is, you know, working on their stuff. Is there any, you know, facility thing that's lacking at this point in time?
I, I think our facilities are in good shape. You know, there, there are lines that we've talked about in, in past years in the, in the five-year fiscal forecast with regard to the high school and, or not with regard to the school district in terms of capital projects we see coming up. You know, one of those being roofs on the two, on the two schools in Chatham. We have a new facilities director who has been looking at whether we can do some work to, to patch some, some holes in a membrane roof that can buy us more time than, than five years. But, but we see out there from a facilities perspective, the roofs as the big one. The, the buildings are in great shape. You know, overall, I, I extended an offer to the, both of the select boards to come with me on a tour of the schools right before we opened this year. And I got a few people that joined me for, you know, for the walk-around. We did, I think, a lot of great work in trying to keep up with, with maintenance projects. You know, the, the middle school, when I, you know, when I came here initially, there was carpet, you know, carpeting was threadbare, I think would be an understatement, and has been replaced by, with carpet squares. And you, you walk in now and it's like, you know, people are asking, did you paint the walls? And it's, it's like, well, the walls weren't painted, but the carpet was, you know, it looks, it looks better.
But I doubt there's, there's any good reason or justification a student would say, well, I'm not going there because I don't like the building. You know what I mean?
No, the facilities are good. In terms of, in terms of Harwich Elementary School, again, there are, there are, the bubble is currently in that fourth, the fourth grade at Harwich Elementary School. Those classes are a little larger than, than what we would want. So there's six sections that have about 20 students in those, in those classes. If, you know, but you, there's not space to go and add, you know, add a seventh, you know, a seventh class within the building. But behind them, the classes are slightly, you know, the class, the cohort sizes are slightly smaller and the class sizes are, are reasonable. So it's, you know, so the building, the building is, easily houses the students, the students we have.
I think unfortunately, I mean fortunately or unfortunately, in Harwich, we happen to have, in addition to our schools, we have two other schools. One happens to be a tech school and one happens to be the Lighthouse Charter School. Transportation-wise, it's relatively easy to get the kids, you know, there, if you will, because you're within the town. If you're talking about kids going, you know, long distance, say, to go to a different middle school, that's a, that's a bigger difference, I think. You know, talking about somebody going to Kingston or something to do that, I think. You know, so we're, we're fortunate on one hand that we have all these schools in our town, but it's also a complication for us, I think. And I just think it's relatively straightforward for people to make decisions, you know, okay, it's easy for me to, I'm not going to miss much. The kid's not going to be too much time delayed getting home or getting there and that type of thing. So I think that's a, that's a consideration for people, along with, are their friends going there? You know, I mean, I'm sure you run into some of that stuff. It's a constant battle.
Ryan?
Follow-up on those points you're making, Peter, which are good points. You know, it's a, it's more of an art than a science of figuring out how to retain, how to keep kids from going. You know, parents have their own agendas, kids have their own agendas. You have kids leaving because we don't have a sport they want to play. You know, we have kids leaving because, you know, their friends are going to go play a certain sport and, you know, and nuss it. Does that mean there's anything wrong with our educational system? You know, I want to compliment Scott and also the, his other administrators on an issue having to do with, having to do with school choice. And this is what I mean by it's more of an art than a science. You know, we have a, we have, we have a capacity in these schools. There's no specific amount in the, in the elementary schools. But in terms of goals, the question was asked, do we have goals on retention? The specific goals that the school committee has has to do with class size. So, you know, you could probably squeeze another 100 kids into any of the, or at least in the Harwich Elementary School, but that doesn't meet our goal to keep the class sizes at an amount that's best for the education of, of the students. So what that leads to is we build a high school that has a certain capacity. And each year, the administration has to determine how many students they're going to allow in school choice. And you have to, and this is where I want to compliment them, they have to think about how many first graders to let in in anticipation of how many are going to end up in high school. You know, you have students coming in from another district. Generally speaking, if they're there, then their siblings are going to be allowed to come in. You know, we, we don't want to, we don't want to retain so many students, if you will, or add to the students in such a way that we will then exceed our capacity. So it's a, it's a long and complicated process to determine how many students let into each class in order to make sure that we don't have excessive class sizes or, God forbid, outgrow our new high school.
I, I think in, in terms of that, that little magic that you have to, have to play, if you, if you look on the front page, you'll notice, you'll notice if you, if you look at the Harwich students that are in Chatham Elementary School, you'll notice that that number generally is, it's, it's declining from fourth grade to kindergarten. You know, there's fewer, there's fewer Harwich students looking at Chatham Elementary School. And in part, that was prior to regionalization, some Harwich families were looking at Chatham Elementary School. And then following Chatham Elementary School would come Chatham Middle School and Chatham High School for whatever perceived benefit that was for those, for those families. But that pressure isn't there anymore. You know, what's following Chatham Elementary School is Monomoy Regional Middle School. So, so we're seeing, we're seeing fewer Harwich children opting that direction, which then means we have to balance that out and make sure that we're not bringing in as many choice children into Harwich Elementary School. Otherwise, you'd see those class numbers really skewing out of, out of whack. So we, so we're trying to balance it off and encourage, we've largely closed Harwich Elementary School for choice and have encouraged families to look towards Chatham Elementary School, which you can imagine for some families might be, you know, a further, a further hike. But, but we're seeing, you know, we're seeing a shift where there's more choice that's out, you know, not Harwich students heading towards Chatham Elementary School and really siblings and, and more Harwich students looking at, at Harwich Elementary School. But it's, it's definitely an interesting balancing act trying to, you know, trying to keep that, keep that in place. And again, if those families stay with us, you know, this high school that was built for 700, you know, there's, there's roughly 700 high school-aged children out there. It's just families have chosen, you know, some other, you know, some other options. And to have them ideally, as we look forward, see Monomoy as the best option out there, that's, that's, that's ultimately the long-term goal, Jack.
Julie?
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of, back to your point about the alternative learning within the high school, is there, has there been any thought to looking to create sort of a similar type of program that would kind of play more to what the charter schools are offering, to maybe pull from some of that?
Well, I, I think, you know, what, for the, for the, for the middle school level or high school level, you know, at, at the high school level, I, I think what families may have been looking for is, is sort of the rigor of an IB program. And while we didn't put an IB program in place at, at the new Monomoy Regional High School, what we put in place is a really robust and strong AP program. And I think families, there, there have been some students that have actually left Sturgis and come back to us for that, you know, for that, for that program. I, I think looking, I think looking at what, what is the attraction for Lighthouse for our middle school families is something that we're going to have to, have to grapple with. I, you know, I, it's, it's not an IB program. I, you know, I, I, I'm still struggling to, you know, to come up with what that, you know, what the, you know, the, the difference is between what I see from, you know, from a father that has now had a daughter from, you know, come up through the middle school and a son who started in the middle school, now at the high school. It's been a great...
Yeah.
...middle school experience for my, you know, for my own children, wearing a dad hat, not the superintendent hat. So, you know, so I, I can't imagine a better place for my own children.
Right. No, no, and I, I was just curious if that was anything that was ever looked at. And actually, you touched upon one other thing, which is, is there a waiting list in, in only at the elementary level per se? Is there a waiting list per school? Not in the high school, I can tell.
To, a waiting list for choice?
Yeah.
We, we have been fortunate for families that have wanted to look to choice in, that if you, if you apply, you largely can get in. But we, at, at times have to go and, and put a cap. Each year, we do a vote at the school committee level to, annually, each school district needs to do this on whether or not they're going to open their doors to choice. And, and at that time, kind of indicate what, what grade levels we see the capacity at. You know, so again, you know, typically, you know, we say at, you know, Harwich Elementary, we have no room unless there's, there's siblings and encourage families to, to look towards Chatham, you know, towards Chatham Elementary. So it, so that, you know, oftentimes, we can say there's, there's an option, it's just maybe in the school that's a little further away from you. At the, at the high school level, most of the families that have, you know, as long as they've applied before the start of the school year, we've opened our doors to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any follow-up from Angelo?
Just a question. Did I hear you correctly that you said that there are a number of children are leaving the county and the town? About 5% did you say?
Well, I, I don't know that they're leaving. I think it's, I think it's more just the, the demographics of, of the area, that there's, the, that the Cape, the Cape is having less children born on it. Not that, not that there's, not that there's an exodus, but that there's just less births happening over time. And that's creating the, the demographic shift down for our district now.
You said about 5%?
5% over the last five years.
Last five years, okay.
Great. Jack, follow-up?
Thank you. One of our members just came in, Rick Zorros. Do you have any questions about the topics? And I, have you? I, I know the budget hasn't been presented correctly.
No.
In, in mind with...
Peter, mind, Richard, thank you. Sorry.
Just what Pete was, Peter was saying about the capacity and so forth, when the plan is submitted or your cap, or your budgets, can you also submit the, a capital plan? Is there a capital plan? Could that be submitted also?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll help in terms of capacity, what you're doing with the schools and what more you need or what, what you're projecting. Okay?
Thank you.
I want to note that Zorros is appointed by the FIDCOM to be on the Cap Model Act Committee to, to answer various, able, able...
Larry?
One follow-up question. If the capacity is 700 and you're six, whatever it is now, in terms of people moving out to school choice, what, what, how much increased staffing would it take to, to handle 700 students if you actually had that number? Because that's due to your discussion on in and out, do you have to hire more, more staff to take care of?
If we, if we were to see 700 come up to the high school, I, I actually, I, it's, I think, I think what we'd be having is a cost-neutral discussion, knock on wood. Because, because in order to have that happen, the, the students that are currently choicing out someplace to a charter or a, or choice out to another school district, they would be with us. So, and because they're with us, the money that's currently leaving Monomoy's budget to a charter school or to another school district would stay with us. So, so we may, we may, if, if we had, if, you know, yeah, so, so if we, if the high school, which is currently at 610 this year, were to go up to 700 in the out years, ideally from a budget perspective, it should be neutral because the, the students that were out to get to 700 are staying with us and the money that was heading out is with us that could pay for the, you know, three or four teachers that you might need to have to accommodate that number of students and keep class sizes where they are.
So yes.
Just, just one other, one other quick one to tie in capital with, with school choice and retaining students. One of the things that you will hear in terms of forecasting in upcoming presentations that the school committee heard this summer, there's a want at the middle school to, to do what we currently are doing at the high school. At the high school, every student in eighth grade gets a Chromebook. And the entire high school curriculum is designed around that Chromebook. And it's quite effective and it's, it's really been beneficial to students. Our middle school principal came before the school committee this summer to talk about a one-to-world initiative, as he's referring to it, where we would outfit every middle schooler with a Chromebook. And again, a way to hopefully see, have more middle schoolers see the, and their families see the program as strong, to build that middle school program around that Chromebook as well. So that, that does have a budget impact, you know, so there's, there's about $150,000 of, of capital outlay to make that initiative move forward. But it's, but it's one of those things, I think, that's going to be really important. If we look at where, where's the one spot that we really need to focus on most, it's that middle school program. And, and it ties into the capital question from before.
Great. We also, the state is going... Great. We also, the state is going rapidly towards testing by computer. So it becomes even more important that the middle school students have computers that they can use. And the Chromebook is the most cost efficient we have found. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Scott. Leo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. DeCosta asked early on of you gentlemen, and I think Mr. Wintergreen answered it. The cost to the taxpayers when a student happens to leave. And I believe the answer was that although it's kind of indirectly to the taxpayers because the money comes out of the school budget, $5,000 if a student were to go to another public school through school choice. And then I believe it was stated up to $15,000 if the student chooses to go to a charter school. Do you have any figures on or is there any money taken out of your budget if in fact the student goes to either a private school? Or if a student goes and becomes homeschooled?
Private, students that go to private school and students that are homeschooled have no funding that comes out of our budget. And those students don't show up in the foundation enrollment because they, they aren't students that the district has a financial obligation to.
Thank you, Scott. Any additional questions from the public? Okay. Thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you.
Look forward to those at the exit interview data and another meeting.
Absolutely.
We'll make note of the timing for next year as well.
Thank you.
Jack, thank you for your team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is CEVEX solar distribution. The last time this board heard this was May 16th, I believe, and prior to that was April 11th. On April 11th, we had a presentation done by our Assistant Town Administrator Charlene. On May 16th, there was a document in our packet, which was a memorandum of understanding, kind of a first start from our town administrator. At that meeting, there was still some follow-up questions and we really didn't take any direction. At that meeting, we did give, the board gave consent, consensus that I could continue to work on this as well as Chris Clark. So, in tonight's, in tonight's packet, there is two different models. The model numbers are based on the revenue projected in the presentation on April 11th. The first model is, is showing the towns, where the, the, one, one shows the split, which was the original proposed, which was a 50, 57% town, 43% water enterprise fund with a few expenses being assessed to the water enterprise fund. The other option is making the water enterprise fund a, an additional off-taker, where the town would retain about 50% more of the, of the revenue. So, you know, with that, I'd open up some discussion. You're all looking at the numbers. You know, my recommendation, and I did meet with the water commissioners a couple of weeks back on their agenda and just told them what my recommendation was going to be so that there wasn't any surprises at a public meeting. My recommendation would be to make them an off-taker, which would get the town a little bit closer to the $300,000 mark that we originally anticipated when we came up with this project. With that, they have already budgeted based on the past conversations. They've budgeted the money for FY17. So we wouldn't start the new program if we all agreed until FY18 budget. In my meeting at the water enterprise fund, at the commissioners' meeting, it was indicated that they thought that they would pay expenses at about $2,000. And that they would, their earnings would be about 140, 141,816. If we split the expenses in total, including the tax bill on that property, their, their, their income would be about $103,216 versus that 141,816. So, I'd open it up for discussion. Peter?
Hold on, let's back up a second. Do we, do we ever hear from the state guy? Did anything ever happen with that?
Chris?
Did he ever respond?
Long and short of it is no. The, the state's in the process of figuring out what the best model would be. And because there's several cities and towns that have this, they have not yet filed a, or formed an opinion as to what to advise to give to cities and towns.
Okay, so we can sort of do what we want and then beg forgiveness later, right? I mean, why not, right?
Just in addition, real quick, Peter, in a meeting two weeks ago in our agenda meeting, when Chris and I talked about putting this on, a question was raised on whether or not we could change the Schedule Z. I did follow up with Liz Argo, our CEVEX representative, and she said that no problem changing the Schedule Z. As long as the water enterprise fund didn't remove their meters from the Schedule Z, that we would be okay. We wouldn't be changing our deal and that they would be okay with it. She also indicated that based on today's rates, the 72,000 that the water enterprise fund would take is, is a good deal for them. That there's not the same rates that we had negotiated before.
Okay. And just for clarification, on the first model, I'll just call it the first model, okay? Net revenue slash savings, the 242, okay, is meant to be the town's revenue?
Yes.
And then the revenue column five is paid to the water enterprise fund?
Correct.
Just, just trying to make sure. So that's what we give to them. And then we have expenses and we have indirect costs, right?
Correct.
So our net, if you will, in that model, so it's net savings, but I think our net revenue in that case would be the 103, right?
The enterprise fund's net savings would be, their, their income would be the 103, Peter.
Okay.
Ours would be the 242.
Okay, so that's the water department. I'm just trying to clarify that, okay. So then the second model, okay, same revenue, then the off-taker expense, whatever, okay? And the net revenue slash savings is the town's number?
278, 079.
And the net savings is the town's net savings over what we were doing in the previous model or the first model?
Correct. And the, and the water enterprise fund would receive 72,000.
Okay.
So if they're treated as an off-taker, they get 72 instead of 142.
Obviously, it makes sense to do them as an off-taker as long as we're allowed to do it, that's all.
Anything further, Peter?
No.
Angelo?
I, I concur with Peter.
Julie?
Oh, I, I do too, yeah.
No?
Yep.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, we're going to draft up, or I have drafted up some of the changes to try to effectuate the, the 72. My big thing is just on the off-taker, you know, that we have them treated as if they're an off-taker. We don't lose the meters. Losing the meters may have a detrimental impact. So concept wise, I think it's fine in terms of, you know, the selectmen need to buy into this as well as the, the water commission. It has to be a memorandum of agreement signed by both parties. So it needs to be agreed by both.
So would it be the consensus of the board to let Chris draft a memorandum of understanding and bring it back next week? Peter?
I guess I go a little, maybe further than that, a little bit different than that. And that, and that would make a motion that we, as far as the solar system revenue goes, that we treat the water department as an off-taker at this point in time for FY, starting in FY18. FY18 and, and draft the memorandum of agreement or to that effect. And negotiate it with the water department, or water commissioners, rather.
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to convert the water enterprise fund to an off-taker for the CEVEX solar distribution. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second part of that would be, and Chris, this is for you to look into. They didn't have a budget for FY17 showing that they would pay half of the expenses. And I believe ba, based on our conversation of May, on May 16th, that was, that was definitely brought up that the board thought that they should pay their fair share of expenses, 43% of expenses if they're getting 43% of the revenue. Do you want to have that conversation with Sandy at the water department and?
I thought, what, you're looking at 17, so the agreement was 18 going forward? And you're looking to see if they can recover any of the, the costs related for this year?
And I guess what I'm saying is we never made an agreement to them that they would get 43% of the revenue and no, no real percentage of the expenses. So where that, where that got lost, I'd like to try and
I can explore that, put something together.
Thank you. Moving on, we have new business. So we have, I had a request, an email from Richard Houston that the board pass a resolution opposing ballot two question regarding charter schools. Normally, the board doesn't get involved in politics and, and Chris pointed that out to me today. You know, I think because of the enrollment numbers that we just discussed, this would be an important conversation and I thought I would allow it. So if the board doesn't, is not opposed to allowing this, Richard Houston is here to explain it. Anyone opposed to?
I don't mind hearing from.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to kind of look a little bit more carefully. And I don't want to put a cold towel on anything, but when I went through the, the various groups that were identified, just so the boards are aware, there were about 300, but the first 103 were actually union organizations. So I wouldn't consider those to be necessarily public institutions. There were several school committees, which I think would be consistent with the, the selectmen, but there were 120 school committees. But actually, there was only one, if, as I looked at the list, there was only one Board of Selectmen. I think it was the Town of Douglas Board of Selectmen that actually officially voted to support that. And I just wanted the board to be aware that there wasn't a lot of selectmen input in terms of this. Certainly, school committee was a fair number, but you guys would be one of the few, I guess, is all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. So I'm going to allow you to do the presentation and then the board can decide if they want to take an action.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, the list that's referenced by Chris, well, just to provide some context first. Thank you very much for the time at the speaker and good evening. Anyone who's listened to the radio or watched the TV in the last few weeks knows what this is all about. It's, if you guys watch or listen to the same things that I do, sometimes you get the competing advertisements back to back. And it's kind of stunning to see the contrast because they're often directly contradicting one another. But this is a big statewide and national battle. And yes, there are a lot of the unions, including the teachers' unions. But if you look through the list, that's being updated every week. So the initial printout that you folks have, just since that link was sent to the chair, has been updated. I think there's another 20 or 30. And it's, I don't know the exact number of Boards of Selectmen, but city councils and cities are ground zero on this battle. We see it in our little world and it has a million dollars worth of impact on us. But I think in the cities that are listed there, Springfield, Worcester, Boston, they're the ones that, Brockton, where we had several references to earlier today, they're the ones that really face this on a larger scale. And I think that's where it is for ground zero on the national level as well. So I'm not here tonight speaking on the part of the school department. This is me being my usual engaged citizen, freedom and democracy kind of thing going on. And, you know, for me, it's a philosophical thing personally about the meaning of public education. And my desire to come and place this before the selectmen is that our school committee has already adopted the resolution. And I've been encouraging through my communication with the chair, and I've communicated with the chair in Chatham, is that since this is a collaborative budgeting process, it's kind of interesting that we showed up here the same night on two different schedules. But given that collaboration, it seemed to me appropriate to try to get both of the towns' leadership as well as the school department's leadership to have a voice in this ongoing battle. Janelle mentioned earlier, the charter school moving into town. We have an empty middle school. We have control over the middle school, but
Richard, real quick, just give everyone an overview of question two.
Yeah. So, so question two is basically voting whether to lift the cap. This is not about existing charter schools. This is lifting the cap statewide so that there'd be a significant expansion in the number of charter schools. So for us, to cut this to the short version, if other charter schools were going to open in our area, and I don't think that's the main intent of this particular ballot question, but statewide, if they lift the cap and more charter schools open, then the budgetary problems that were just being referenced to have within the last half hour become more extreme. And it's one thing if you have public property, like our empty middle school. But charter schools, if they make a private transaction and get a charter from the state, they can open up within a community by purchasing private property that doesn't even give the town any say. Brockton, I was very interested to see Brockton referenced because Brockton's been ground zero of this huge debate. When the whole city and the whole political process is adamantly opposed to it, but when the Board of Education has the authority to issue charters, and if you lift the cap that places a limit on those charters, then it opens up a whole budgetary can of worms. So my desire to have the board engaged in the process is to act as an alliance with the regional school district, which has already taken a stance on this issue in order to have the voice of the community as a whole. This is going to be decided in the next month. A month from now is too late to have a voice. And we end up over the, possibly in the years ahead, with much bigger financial headaches that were just more than adequately addressed by the previous presenters. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the particulars. The wording of the resolution that I sent to the chair is, is just one way of phrasing it. I think the wording and the board's comfort with the wording is less important than the board being on record. Because I think our community has wrestled with this more than most non-urban areas have had to do because of the unique geography and charter-related issues that we've faced. I want to stress that this is, has nothing to do with existing charters. This question is about whether to lift the existing cap and allow a major expansion of the charters. So I'd be happy to take any questions if you have.
Peter?
Questions, you mean?
Questions?
I don't have any questions of, for Richard, no.
Janelle?
No.
Angela?
It's not really a question, but I think it would be helpful if you went through the number of dollars that have to come out of our budget.
Well, I actually took out my calculator when I just saw the brand-new numbers that you guys just saw, and it's just about a million dollars. So that makes you a budgetary problem and the school department's budgetary problem significantly more.
The reason I asked the question is that there is obviously advertising going on that doesn't understand that that occurs. And I would hope that the, our population would understand exactly what the problem is that we're facing in terms of budget.
Thank you very much for asking the question. To be as fair-minded as possible, it's extremely complicated. Because there is a temporary reimbursement when a child first goes to a charter school. And so in the political debate that's currently unfolding, like with many of the political debates that we have to face, it's very difficult to squeeze into 30 seconds something that it takes people years to understand how it works. You folks and the folks that just left this room have been facing this battle for years. And our battle is small compared to a lot of the most vulnerable communities, vulnerable, I mean, on educational fronts around this state. So this is not just us, we face it, but this is a bigger issue that faces all of us. But it's a complicated dance that allows people in 30-second ads to look and sound as if they're on two opposite ends of the world.
Thank you. Julie, did you have any?
No, Leo. You go ahead, Leo.
Thank you. I wasn't going to stay for this, but I saw it on the agenda. And with all due respect to Mr. Houston, I would ask you not to take any action on this. I think it's not appropriate. I do not, I voted for you, the Board of Selectmen, to be the executive body of the Town of Howard. I'm a resident of the Town of Howard. I participate in a lot of things as a citizen in the town. And I understand which our obligation is as a Board of Selectmen, the executive body of this town. And I really don't want you to be taking a position for the town on any ballot question. I don't particularly want to get into my feelings one way or the other on question two. I only stand tonight to ask you people not to in fact take a position on this. I am disappointed that our school committee took a position on it. If I had had the opportunity and I was there, I would have asked them the same as I asked you. But again, we also have to understand some true facts, too. This particular question two is not going to affect Cape Cod, all right? We are not at our current cap for charter schools. So raising the cap is not going to affect whether someone wants to come into Howard or anywhere. or anywhere else on the Cape and put up another charter school. We have not met our cap yet. This is a very important question for a lot of the inner-city's public schools. We're, we are very, very fortunate here on Cape Cod that we have excellent public schools and excellent private schools and excellent charter schools. So I don't think that the residents of Cape Cod are really, really that affected by this question, too. There are communities in the Commonwealth, though, that quite frankly don't have as good a quality public schools. And those residents desire to have the cap lifted so they can have a better option in their communities. I think this is a ballot question for a reason because the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should get out and vote how they want the Commonwealth to act. And quite frankly, I'm here before you tonight asking you not to take a stand on this question because you don't speak for me on question two. Whether you're going to approve it or deny it, I would not ask you to speak for me on question two, three, four, five, or any other question. It's my obligation to go vote, and that's the opportunity that the Town of Howard will be speaking. You don't have to speak for us on this one. So I respectfully ask that you not take a position on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess that I, you know, understand what Leo is saying, and I appreciate it. But on the flip side of that, I can say that I look at the Board of Selectmen as also responsible for making positive and responsible decisions for our town and fiscally, education-wise. And so I guess my question here is, I'm looking at a list of, you know, various Democratic town committees. I'm looking at a couple more Board of Selectmen. So I definitely think that's open for debate about how we can vote. And I'm certainly willing to listen to more and learn more. On the flip side of that, we also, for the taxpayers, have to look at what that might do to our schools. And we also have to look at that for people who have children in school and who do not have children in school because overall, the dollar value of everybody's home is affected by a strong school system. So I think that maybe this is something we should reconsider. Maybe we need to talk about it further. But I don't see it as a simple thing that it's just up to everybody to vote. I think we have to look at the impacts it has to our town, to the draws of the charter schools that have on our schools. So I would suggest that maybe we revisit this and figure out what's appropriate to take a stand on. I don't want to violate any state laws. But I do consider it a serious matter that the town should look at. These decisions, this kind of referendum, does affect our bottom line, whether you have a child in school or not, so.
Thank you, Julie. Janelle?
I don't have anything to say.
Peter, any follow-up?
On the topic, I would just say that historically, we have not done this. We also haven't heard from the opposition, if you will, on the other side of the equation, which I don't think is quite fair. And I'm saying a spokesperson for someone for whatever this question is, question two. We aren't considering question one, question nine, whatever, and maybe we should. Three, whatever, you know, those types of things. And by the, by the time any of this information, with all due respect, Julie, we get together, the election will be over. So I mean, you know, I sort of, I view it as a moot point. I also view it as, and a thing we haven't talked about, we haven't had the experience, but those kids that are living in New Bedford and Brockton and Springfield and Worcester and whatever, you know, they deserve the same sort of opportunities that our kids have. And they don't have them right now. They don't have them right now. If they're running lousy school systems in the city of New Bedford, you know, some of those kids ought to have a chance to get the heck out of there.
I would not disagree with that at all. But, but at the same time, you also have a tiered system here, too, because some kids get in a lottery and get into a charter school, and some kids don't.
So maybe we need more charter schools. I don't know.
I don't really know that you need to.
I think it's all about competition in the end, quite frankly. That's what this was all set up for.
I think it's about our tax dollars leaving. So I think we have to be careful about how we look at this.
I'm going to take, Richard.
Thank you, Leo, for jumping in there. My intent was not to just present the resolution and expect that you folks were going to just vote on it. I would encourage a discussion. But the brief discussion that's just occurred, to me, reinforces the point that I was trying to make, which is, this is an extremely complicated issue. Peter, I don't disagree with your description. But when some of the money is going to a charter school, it makes the other schools worse. There are some winners and losers. It's a complicated dance. I'm not going to suggest we're going to settle it here tonight. But since I've been highly engaged, both as a professional and as an enthusiastic citizen, in what our towns, Chatham and Howard, but particularly Howard, since I'm a resident here, have faced on this question alone. And I'm not the be-all, end-all expert on this. But having lived it, and those of you who know me know that I'm, you know, perhaps a little overly engaged in some of my professional mania, that this is an issue that I think when I vote for my Board of Selectmen, for my school committee people, for my county commissioners, I'm voting not just because of what they've said during the campaign. I'm voting on what I trust about their judgment because there are always going to be new issues, new referenda, and other problems that crop up along the way. And I want my leadership team to help educate the public on the most complicated of issues. We just had Cape Cod Commission folks here talking about those kinds. Let's talk water quality and throw in, we're about to jump into an education process on water quality because we've been dealing with it, I don't know, only for 30 years, and most people don't know what's going on with it. The same thing is true here. So the people who are most engaged in the process, in my opinion, have a responsibility to use that added knowledge to help our towns avoid potential greater problems in the future. And in this case, it's not just our particular communities. It's the state and the country as a whole because this is a big issue. So unless you have any other questions, I didn't mean to take up even this much time. I just wanted to put the language before you so that if, before the election, the leadership of our community feels that it would be helpful to take a stance on this, that you at least had the opportunity to do so. I've got to say, I was a little surprised that it had gone this long. I assumed when the school committee had adopted it that there would be some sort of communication between the school committee and the Boards of Selectmen as other communities. As you can see, the other regional school, DY is on board, Falmouth is on board. You know, I just assumed that would be the case. But given especially some of the things that we've struggled with and the million-dollar, it's the million-dollar question for our community.
Thank you, Richard. Ed, did you have something you wanted to add?
Ed McManus, as you know, I've been a member of the Mass Municipal Association's Regional and Municipal Policy Committee. And we've discussed this a lot, and it's fairly clear from those discussions that, as Leo pointed out, the, on Cape Cod, we're not in an area where the caps have been met. And so it would probably, on a microcosm level, the Cape have not a whole lot of impact on whether there'd be tremendously large amount of new charter schools. But in the areas of the cities where the, the group that pushed this proposition are centered, you would probably see quite a number of new charter schools created over the course of time. Financial impacts of that are, is, you know, as we all know, we have a total of six legislators out of 180 in the state legislature. We tend the thought, we've been fighting for a reconsideration of the distribution formula in Chapter 70 and have never gotten anywhere because, quite honestly, the legislators from the cities control how that formula is put together and make sure it benefits them. If their districts, through opening of new charters, are financially even more pressed, the argument won't be trying to get the Chapter 70 formula revised so it benefits areas like the Cape. The argument will be how to keep it getting revised so it doesn't damage us further, which is a very real possibility.
Thank you, Ed. I'm going to end discussion on this. We'll, I entertain bringing this back if there's a request from a board member to bring it back next week or the week after.
Or we could just vote not to do it if you want to.
I think we'll just think about it and bring it back if we want to bring it back. Unless you want to make a motion.
That's right. I would make a motion that we denied a request.
Motion's been made to deny the correct request. Any second? Okay, moving on. Next up on the agenda is the request from Habitat for Humanity for $300,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a project at 93 and 97 Route 28, West Howard. Yes. Good evening. Good evening. That's good.
I'm still badly. I don't know who to.
Good evening. Could you just tell us who you are?
Thank you. My name is Lee D'Arizola. I am part of the land acquisition team at Habitat for Humanity. And with me is Susan Johnson from Hetch. And in the audience are executive director and a variety of Hetch board members and Habitat friends as well.
Great. We have one recusal. Janelle is going to recuse herself.
I am recusing myself, Mr. Chair, because my brother is on payroll with Habitat.
Thank you.
And we're very happy about that. Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod works in partnership with families in need to build hope, homes, lives, and community. We build deed-restricted, affordable housing, but we are about more than just houses and framing. We're about people and we're about community. Many people have heard of our program. It's a sweat equity program. That's a core that a lot of people have heard about, where our buyers, and they are buyers, sometimes people hear the term lottery and think people win a house. But our buyers get mortgages, they're affordable mortgages, and contribute 250 to 500 hours, building their own home or homes in their community, other Habitat homes. There's a considerable education component in our program as well. Budget, help with a mortgage, education on building, education on home maintenance, with education being a key to successful and sustainable, strong homeownership. Another key to our program that I think many people have heard about is the community aspect. Volunteerism, working together as a whole, as a community, working to address our affordable housing crisis. Earlier this year, we came before the Howard Housing Authority, the Howard Housing Committee, and this board. And we presented a housing concept to the town. Why we're here with Hetch is it involves, Hetch currently owns approximately two and a half acres on 93 and 97 Main Street in West Howard. This was originally purchased by Hetch with a vision of rental housing. The original plan was 20 rental houses. Change in the real estate market, change in the landscape of affordable housing funding, change in Hetch's organizational composition, and the passing of Bob Murray. Hetch realized that this wasn't a path that was appropriate for them to go on. Hetch reached out to Habitat to see what we could do in collaboration. Our concept that we came up with together is to use Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, Affordable Housing Permitting, to re-divide that two and a half acres. So this is what we have now, the site plan, six homes. And wait a minute. I brought my cat toy. So we have, we have six homes in the back, the southern portion. That would be the Habitat home, six lots, the cul-de-sac. And then these are the two existing buildings that are there on the street already. This is a home, the older home, that is the Chase home. This home, there's a garage that would have to be demolished for the subdivision road, but the bulk of the structure can stay. And the collaborative process is as we go through the 40B, Hetch maintains those two front lots. And these six are the Habitat new construction, volunteer build. We, as I said, had been before, the town before with this concept. The town with, through the Affordable Housing Fund, Howard Housing Committee, Howard Housing Authority, supported this project, supported our funding request. The Board of Selectmen awarded us $35,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund for pre-development and feasibility and supported the project, which we thank you very much for that. And basically said, please come back when you have your full application materials, which is now. Over the summer, we did environmental testing. There had been information on a contaminated plume. We wanted to make sure that the site had no, the issues from the plume were VOCs, volatile organic compounds. We wanted to make sure that the site was safe. We did that environmental testing. We did field work, our engineer on flood plain, because there are some flood plain issues, and also water level to see whether we could have full basement, so getting into site planning in depth. We also had an appraisal done. At first, we were here with a looser concept. It's a tighter concept now. And when we came before the board originally, we're saying up to $300,000. Now, we do have a signed purchase and sale for 240, which is based on the appraised value and what we had presented to the board before, that of the valuation, the Hetch properties, we were going to split. It was going to be a 50-50. The Hetch properties would be half of that valuation. And our land, the backland, I call it ours, I guess it's not quite ours yet, would be the other 50%. So now we're here. There's been some change in the board, so we're happy to answer any questions about the project. And we're here to request two things. One, as the board encouraged us to go do this work and come back for the acquisition fund. So we're here to request $240,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund for acquisition. And we are also here to request the board sign and write a letter of support for our local initiative program application. That local initiative program, LIP, application is the first step in the 40B process. That goes to the state. The state does a site visit, determines general feasibility, provides an eligibility letter, and then that eligibility letter goes to the zoning board and the public hearing process. And I think that is where we are also. Part of the purchase, which is very important to us. We know we are requesting town funds, public funds, and want to use them very carefully, is we are asking that those be awarded. We will not purchase the property until we are fully permitted. We will go through the state process. We will go through the zoning board process. We will have our subdivision plan. We will have everything in hand except our building permits. And that is just an important safeguard for affordable housing funds to make sure if we are saying we're going to build six homes, that we would get six homes. So we feel that we're presenting a structure with no risk that this couldn't be permitted.
Thank you. Anything, Ed? Angela, questions?
Yes. Initially, I thought that the, there were some funds taken from the housing funds in town to purchase some of that property. Am I wrong?
There were a lot of meetings. What we ended up, and we actually did confirm, we all went back to, and thank you, Charlene, to the board vote. We received $35,000 for feasibility.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the two properties up in front years ago.
I believe that Hetch, when they were envisioning the 20 rental units applied for community preservation funds, I should let Susan. applied for community preservation funds, I should let Susan speak, but I believe that those have been given back.
Yes, they have. Some funds were used initially, I think in two thousand and nine, for some testing and, uh, engineering plans, but the rest of the funds were returned in two thousand and twelve, I believe, maybe two thousand and thirteen, I'm not sure.
And the site was purchased with, Hetch purchased it with a life initiative loan.
A mortgage, so it was, there was no town money used to purchase either of those properties. It was purchased with a loan from the Life Initiative. There were some awards of funding from, from the town, CPC, to do some work, to see if there'd be feasibility to be able to do the units with, um, Bob Murray, however, that never came about, as Ledar explained, and so those funds were returned.
Okay. Just, just trying to get that through.
Anything else, Angela? Julie?
So with the, uh, the funds that would be received if this were, uh, to take place, would the two-forty go towards paying off that mortgage?
Yes.
Yes. How much is the balance on that right now?
The balance of the mortgage is, um, Life Initiative mortgage is six thou- six hundred thousand.
And then you'll, you'd be left with the two properties in the front?
Yes.
And is there any, um, plan in place yet for those, or?
Thank you, it's a little late for me, I did forget, uh, important element here. Um, yes, there is, in the forty-B structure, there are affordable homes and there are market rate homes. So those two homes would be the market rate homes, so they would not have affordable housing deed riders. They would be owned by Hetch, and again, I feel badly speaking for you, Susan, but I'm sort of on a roll here. What has been presented to the community and what Hetch has said they will do is on the Chase home, the older home, is that they would issue a request for proposal, an RFP for a historic preservation of the home. Do you want any more details on that?
Uh, no, but we did work with the town, um, and we did work with the neighbors, um, when we came to, you know, a meeting of the minds, that that is something that they really wanted to see preserved, including the barn. So we will absolutely stick to doing the, um, RFP for the historic preservation. And as for the ranch home, um, that we would like to possibly keep, as it's currently being rented by a family. And the accessory, uh, unit that's next to it, the garage, is, is currently rented by a woman as well, who are helping find assisted living as her husband passed, and she needs to move on to something safer for her. So that, the tenants that are in the house at ninety-three now, um, they may stay, Hetch may keep it in affordable housing, they may keep, we might keep it in our portfolio, or we may sell it, um, as affordable housing or not. So we're just not sure what we're doing with that structure yet, but ninety-seven will retain its historic, um, preservation, RFP.
Thank you.
Anything else, Julie?
No, that's it.
Peter?
So just to follow on that, on ninety-three, you mentioned the garage is being torn down. So would the occupants be able to stay there during this project, or do they have to go somewhere else when you're doing this?
Well, the-
If they stayed?
They would, as far as I know, they'd be able to stay at this point. They are a family that's been there, um, initially, that was Hetch's office, and we brought this family in on a temporary basis until they could find more permanent housing. So they've been in the process of, of looking for housing as well. So, again, we wouldn't displace anybody, we would help them find something, but I don't believe there'd be an issue with them staying if they so chose.
Needing to clear that area for the road is quite a ways off. We actually don't even look at construction schedules until we're much closer to finishing our permitting. And, you know, we would work cooperatively with Hetch, I mean, we're about creating housing, not displacing people.
Okay, and if I just fall on, the R, you said the RFP for, are you gonna do an RFP for historic preservation in ninety-seven? Is that an RFP for someone to do it, or is that an RFP for someone to buy it and rehab the house?
Buy and rehab, buy and renovate.
So it would be for sale, basically, based on, but there would be a commitment to rehab it, is that how that would work? Are you just trying to sell the house? I mean, I know for a while, the house is just for sale.
Well, the, the house has been for sale, um, however, since the last meeting we came out, when we, when we said to the town that we would issue a historic RFP for the house, anybody who has come to look at the house has been, uh, given a contingencies. And that, even though we don't have the RFP out yet, they do ha- they do know that we are requesting that the purchaser of the home renovate the home. Keep the historic nature.
To somebody's standard.
To some, to somebody's standards.
Okay, and you identify those standards, or?
We will during the RFP process. But we just want people to know, if they're looking at the home, that is going to be one of the contingencies for purchasing the home, they're gonna have to adhere to that.
When do you expect that, assuming this goes forward, when would you expect that process to start?
As soon as we have approval to go ahead and we have, uh, lot lines, so we know exactly what we're selling.
Okay, all right. On the question of the, the environmental work that was done there, the result of some spill or something, right? Is that totally cleaned up, or is there some residual monitoring that has to go on in the future, I don't know?
I don't want to speak to the plume at all, because that's way beyond my expertise. What we did test for was the VOCs that are known to be in effect of that plume. So our area's fine, what my non-engineering understanding is, is that the way the water flows doesn't flow there. So, there's no need for follow-up, we're clear.
Your environmental engineer basically gave you a-
Yes.
Thumbs up.
Or gave you still approval, whatever you wanna call it, right?
Um, actually, the environmental report is part of the packet, it's one of the reasons the packet was unfortunately very thick.
I understand, okay. And so we have a purchase and sales agreement in place, right, for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. When we, when we voted to, to give you folks the thirty-five thousand, I think, do we give Hetch twenty-five at the same time? So could you tell us what you, you told us what you did with our thirty-five, can you tell us what you did with our twenty-five?
We're waiting to do the historic RFP. So that will be used, put towards doing the historic RFP and hiring a consultant to help us, um, build that.
Okay.
So we haven't touched the money until we know what we're doing.
And I know in your, in your documentation that you gave us, um, the sales price of the houses, I see two of them at one, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm reading from this, one, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven fifty, and two at, well, actually four of them at one hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred. Does that seem right?
The Habitat prices are based on number of bedrooms. So we have, this site plan proposes two, two bedrooms and four, three bedrooms, so that's the price.
Those should be the right numbers, right? I think, because I think the two-bedroom ones are, would, listed here at one thirty-one, seven fifty, and the, and all, all four of the three-bedroom houses are at one forty-seven, five hundred.
We just, our board just voted on new prices, so they're not top of my head, but that is the range. I mean, I think currently, a hundred and twenty-six was a two-bedroom, and I think that has increased to the one thirty-one. They are calibrated to be affordable, to families earning at or below, well, the qualification is for families earning at or below sixty or sixty-five percent of median income, yeah.
My question comes, and it becomes, you know, assuming the town basically is paying for the land, right? And you've got some other things going on, you know, whatever monies that come from here and there. You don't need to do it tonight, but at some point, I would like to see what the actual full-up costs of those houses are, even though they're being sold at, at a number, and I don't know what the construction costs are and all that, but I'm just making this up, is a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar house, really a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house? I had no idea, I'm just asking the question. And, um, it only gets down to, you know, in the end, um, you know, what is it, what is a two- and three-bedroom house, you know, worth? And how much we, how much is the real cost, let's put it that way. So we don't need that tonight, you can just-
I'm leaving here already.
If you have it, that'd be great.
It should be, it's usually Exhibit A in the local initiative program application. It's one of the things the state wants to see at this stage, and they're not final, you know, they're not budgets that we've, you know, bid out, but it's general-
So is it in our documentation?
Yep.
It is.
Exhibit A on the local initiative program application.
We actually, uh, it, because of the material was so thick, we did the primary app, I don't think we did all the attachments.
Okay.
We have the attachments, though, certainly we can get them to you.
You only share the numbers with us, or you want us to look?
Oh, um, sure, I'm happy, we have, um, proposed site acquisition at the, we use the total site cost, so it's listed at four-eighty, because that's the whole site from the forty-B perspective, though we're paying the two-forty. Um, site work is one of the larger costs. The infrastructure, building the road, that's at about two-hundred-and-seventy. Um, the home cost, just the construction cost, you know, sort of sticks up, um, is about a hundred and twenty-five per home. I'm just sort of rounding these, I'm not, um, there's, you know, different levels that go into pro formas about, you know, builders' overhead, general conditions, contingency costs. We have soft costs at, um, about three-hundred thousand. Our soft costs include a lot of program work. Um, they are still within the guidelines of what soft cost should be for an affordable housing developer, but we do include a lot of the work we do with our families and our volunteers. And, uh, we have a total development cost of about two and a quarter million dollars. Affordable housing doesn't come-
Say it again?
About two and a quarter million.
For this total project?
Yep. And we do a substantial amount of fundraising, we do a lot of fundraising within the community. We try to access off-Cape grants whenever we can, we've been very successful with Federal Home Loan Bank Boston Funds. We got about two-hundred thousand dollars of those funds for Oak Street. Um, we are, we have it in our pro forma for about a hundred and eighty, um, for this. We put in developer equity, we put in our own money. Um, so there's a list of the, you know, sources of funds as well as the uses.
Okay, so, so just to follow that up, it's kind of a natural question, that it looks like, you know, it's like three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars a unit for the development. I'm just, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that's a number. Is that? And if you divide that by six, I'm just-
Yeah, I, I have the, I have it here, so it's easy for me to look, three-eighty-one.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Which also includes solar panels. So that, you know, sometimes our total development cost, people look at them, and it seems a little on the high side, but if you take out, we estimate, I believe it's twenty-four thousand, um, per home for solar panels. So that's why we're set, because we do, we, I don't know if you noticed, I didn't mention it.
Oriented to the south?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, good.
And we cut-
Just, just a question, I think, to Chris maybe, we, they're asking for another two-forty tonight. Do we know what the balance is in this account?
That's exactly where I was going, Mr.-
Sorry.
We actually, uh, and as was presented earlier, and I agree with that, there is insufficient funds right now, but as time goes on, those funds do replenish as the fund gets its, uh, revenue. Right now, the, the current balance as of tonight is two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety. And that does just, it would be two-hundred-and-forty thousand for this request, and then the, the sixty that was approved before, the thirty-five and twenty-five would both be coming out of that fund, so it's three-hundred thousand ultimately would be from that fund. Go ahead, Peter.
Just to be clear, from the two-twenty-eight you just mentioned, that's available today, I mean, in the bank today, if you will, sixty thousand is already committed, right?
Correct.
Okay, and what's our replenishment rate on this fund?
Yeah, so I was looking, I, I have two numbers here, I don't, I didn't get the, the sequence of how, what, what timetable this is on. But I believe since the beginning of the fiscal year, we received twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand in revenue, and some money has obviously been spent, so here we have, for this fiscal year, uh, five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen has been spent. So th- those two numbers, the revenue and the expense, it still nets out to be the two-twenty-eight. So six thousand dollars has been used against the thirty-five, is at least what this tells me.
Excuse me, if I could, I'm just trying to understand if we're, you know, her source of revenue replenishes at like twelve thousand a month, or what is it, do we know?
That, that I don't know, I, I was gonna check, I don't know if that's quarterly or what he has.
I believe it was monthly, and I think it was seven or nine.
Number like that, I don't-
Yes. Um, because I think when we originally started working with the town and with Hetch, the idea was that by the time we were permitted loosely targeted spring of twenty-seventeen, that the fund would have accrued sufficient funds to cover the purchase, and Habitat's request was to have the funds awarded and just sit there waiting until the contingencies had been met so that we would have the assurance that this was a supported project to move forward with.
So, so I'm just, from a financial standpoint, I'm just making sure we all understand, I now assume that the purchase and the sales agreement has some words in it, or some capability in it that says, you're not gonna, you're not gonna execute this sale until you have the full amount of money from the town available.
Yes.
In other words, you're not asking us to go borrow money to make this happen. You're gonna wait until the fund is fully recharged, I guess, is the way I would describe it, before we do this, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have anything else?
No, I will get the numbers on a monthly basis, sorry about that.
Angelo, follow up?
It's, it's my job to be negative, right? Yeah, excuse me.
You do get your own.
Thank you. It's great that you're doing the RFP for the historic building. What happens if you don't get anybody to wanna do it? Or are you guaranteeing that it will be turned into an historic building, no matter what?
Well, I'll, I, I have confidence that we will, because we've already had a couple of people interested in doing it, know, understanding that they are gonna have to do the historic preservation. Part of that is gonna be, when we do the RFP, the different standards and the different levels that they're gonna require for historic preservation. So I, I, we had initially proposed that we will go out with the RFP, if we put it out for about a year, and if we don't have anybody taking it up, um, we will revisit it and we will resubmit it again for another period of time to be determined, so that it's, it's, it's our hope that somebody will take on this historic RFP.
Mine too, but I did-
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but, so we're gonna try to make it as easy as possible, you know, there's different, um, quality standards or different grades for the historic. So we're, we'll work with the community and we'll see what people want to see from the home, and we'll go from that point. I don't know. Oh, yeah, and Hetch, it's not Hetch's mission to do historic preservation, that is not something that Hetch is willing or able to take on. So that is not something Hetch is gonna commit to.
Great.
I, I understand that, but, uh, so you will just wait until you sell it to someone who will do the historic preservation, that's what you're saying?
I, I don't know if we have a timeframe, if the board has discussed a timeframe for that to happen. I don't know how to answer that question.
Okay, because, you know, obviously, just putting out the RFP doesn't guarantee anything. That's my problem. Problem is, if you put out the RFP and it doesn't work, what do you do? Or is, does it always stay that way, uh, forever? Uh, or do you put it out for six months and then say, no, we're gonna turn it into a van-sol, or whatever you want? That's just a question.
One second, Don, Julie?
What is the age of the house? Is it before nineteen forty?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. I wanna say eighteen, eighteen forty, eighteen seventy.
So it's mandated anyways to be historically preserved?
Oh, it's a, I don't believe so.
Go through the Historic Commission?
You'd have to go through the Historic Commission.
You can't, yeah, a demo delay and that, you wouldn't, right, you'd have to file for a demo delay or to do anything to the house, right? Oh, they've already-
It's already been done, so that's, that's why my question-
Real quick, before I get to you, Don.
Yeah, I, I just wanna-
Hang on one second.
We, we did file and we did, uh, go through the year waiting period for the demo delay, and again, I think that speaks to Hetch's commitment to doing everything we can not to demo the house, putting out the RFP. We could've had this done and settled, and the property would just be there, and it pr- practically, it has more value as a piece of land to Hetch. However, in really trying to make this a win-win-win for the community, for the neighbors, West Harwich, Hetch, and affordable housing, you know, we're, we're stepping away from that at this time to issue this RFP, and we really hope, and we'll market it and do the best that we can to bring somebody in to purchase it with that intent.
So you'd be comfortable if we attached that happening to the three-hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely not, that's-
That's what I wanted to know.
That's not, that's not something that Hetch can do.
Okay. The, uh, real quick, the purchase price, you have it four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, is that the appraised price for the two and a half acres?
Correct, the appraised price for the total, the two lots together is four-eighty, and Habitat will be paying fifty percent.
Great, thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you folks know, you sort of tasked me, because it's the politest way of putting it, in April, to try to, uh, resolve some of the issues that related around affordable housing and, uh, salvaging the- resolve some of the issues that related around affordable housing and salvaging the historic front property. A couple of things, I wanna make sure the audience watching this knows as much as you folks conveying this to you. The, the fact is, I wouldn't read into the fact that we're still holding onto the house as meaning anything, because we had to create through the forty B process, the lot lines that enabled the purchaser to know what they were buying, for the front property, because it was, we started working on a purchase and sale, and it was somewhat insanely conditioned about what, where the lot lines might be and what they might be required to do, which is kind of why we wanted the money to go through this RFP process. It's kind of like a Chinese puzzle box, the forty B part of this with the housing had to move forward for us to be able to create the lot. Once the lot's created, in addition to going out to looking for preservationist for the property, we were looking for the eventual purchaser to subject themselves to historic preservation deed restriction. But to Angelo's point is, I mean, we got, we gotta slog through all of these barriers to be able to get to the point where we could even market the house properly. I, I don't think that you need to look in, read into this any further than to know that we're here tonight with all of that work having been done already. Only, we're earnest in wanting to do both of these things. And that's it.
Thank you. Brooks was next.
Brooke Williams, West Harwich. I have a number of concerns about this. It was indicated, just, I would just mention quickly, about an RFP process, but there doesn't seem to be any difficulty of finding tenants in the Chase House. We have a real housing challenge in Harwich, and I would refer the selectmen. There is a lot of information, LIP application, but there's the appraisals. Habit- Habitat paid for appraisals of both ninety-three, ninety-seven, and they give an outline of the structures, which I would encourage the selectmen to look through. And ninety-seven is historic, but there's also a affordable housing component in that provides three units of housing, each unit has a kitchen, has a bedroom, and we have a real need in Harwich for housing. And so I think the thing is, the notion of saying it's just the historic aspect is quite frankly undervaluing that aspect of the Chase House. The second thing is that in requesting this two forty and essentially saying that this, one of the tools that Harwich has is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It was created from some land sales and the wireless tower. I believe it generates thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, the wireless tower. So that if all of the money from the Housing Trust Fund goes for this, it will mean that the selectmen and the town administrator have a one less tool to be utilized in addressing affordable housing issues. The other element we have, or one of the other elements is the Community Preservation Fund, and I believe that Habitat is applying for three hundred thousand dollars for this project as well for construction, but they're making an application. It would seem, the other ways, I believe, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to get money is to go, like for an override or go to town meeting to replenish that. And I don't know if there has been, in the Community Preservation, applications, a application to replenish this Housing Trust Fund. I would've thought, if, if this was the approach going forward, that, that that would've been done. Because I'm concerned that if this money is allocated, there are other issues, like the middle school. In the Stratford report, the middle school that Stratford did, they said the town, or they would want to have an environmental report done on the building and the site. So one of the things that would unite, some people looked at housing for that, other people looked at educational use, the environmental report would serve both, it would inform both of those efforts. And that would be money that, if we had money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we could move forward on that. Also, the notion that, that Hatch is waiting on the RFP process, I find quite frankly very disappointing, and I think that's really is, is a shame, because part of this, to integrate the whole, is to understand what would be involved for someone to respond. What would the RFP, would it, would it say that you can use, you have to use it for housing, or you can change the use? I think it would be important for the selectmen to understand that and to understand how this will work with the Habitat proposal, so that we would try to get the best for the community. And with no information from Hatch in this submittal to you, I think it means there are a lot of things that need to be answered. And before allocation would be made from this fund, I think some of those questions should be addressed. And I think that the other point is that, it was mentioned that essentially it was just the garage, but in fact, if you look at the appraisal for the duplex, it will be, essentially one of the units will be removed. So we start with a duplex, we end with a single-family house. We start with three units at the Chase House, and in fact, the barn in the back, according to the town appraisers, assessor's office, excuse me, I think there was like a seasonal unit in the ba- barn in the back. So I think as part of the exploration of the RFP, the historic, there would be a review of all these structures, determining what's there, and so possible respondents could consider that. But also important, in the appraisal, it indicates that the highest and best use, this is from a professional appraiser hired by Habitat, would be as a three-unit structure. In other words, that's its best market approach. So I don't, I think that would be important to have, but I think getting those, that information together would be very important. And I think that having the money in the Affordable Housing Trust Funds, the town can address some of these questions between the Community Preservation Act fundings is, is the key of this particular fund. And so I think that getting more of this information together, and again, also working with the, the community. And I think the appraisal indicates the importance of the Historic Commission and community input in terms of the housing process, because those are three units. If we didn't have a historic, or demolition delay process, those might've been gone. And so when we see, like last year, town meeting, there were no housing proposals. And so I think the thing is that we need to both create new housing, but also be very careful on maintaining and restoring our existing housing stock. So I think those are, these are important. So I would suggest further information be developed, and if it was felt that we need to use this fund, there's the option of going to town meeting and replenishing that, or if CPC, if there's been a proposal, I don't know if Mr. Creed is here, but in any case, I think that information should be presented, thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ralph Diamond, and I am an abutter to ninety-seven, Route twenty-eight. And I have a few questions. First of all, I was wondering, has a analysis or study of traffic, potential traffic patterns and problems been done? We're gonna be adding, as far as I could see, according to this plan, possibly twelve automobiles coming in and out onto the, you know, one maybe the busiest road on Cape Cod. So I was wondering if, Liddar, you could tell me if any traffic analysis has been done?
Go ahead, Liddar.
Typically, part of the local initiative program process is we get to this stage, we get the housing partnership, housing committee here, selectmen's approval, start working with, send it to the state, start working with local departments, and that is a great opportunity to bring up questions. Our engineer designed this, so obviously we have the correct site distances and such. We do have a traffic expert that has volunteered for us previously, and if that was an important question, we would bring in our traffic specialists and get the question answered. But that's part of the local initiative program process and the zoning board of appeals process, and we're happy to get the information that will make this a better project.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I understand that because I'm an engineering firm, you know, prepared the plan, that we assume that everything is, you know, done correctly, and maybe it is, but, you know, I was looking at the, the floodplain maps today, and, you know, at least one of these, one of these houses seems to be very close to the floodplain. Now, I, I received, I received a notice from my bank that I had to buy flood insurance because I am, part of my house is in a floodplain. And I was just wondering how carefully this was done next to the FEMA maps to make sure that none of these houses were in the floodplain.
Go ahead, Liddar.
Another great question and another great sort of part of this process. That is exactly what the board asked us to do, supporting the project, giving us feasibility funds, and saying, bring us back a site plan. We have done site work, we have done field work on the site, and the homes are located so that they will not require flood insurance. That was important to us, because for an affordable home, it's not affordable anymore if you have flood insurance. So that would've made this project a non-starter. And that was one of our first.
Because I'm not, I'm not only concerned with, with insurance, I'm most concerned with the impact on the water table in the area. All, as, many of the septic systems in this project are clearly in the floodplain. And I was just wondering if the impact on that, impact of that has been considered. I think there are a lot of environmental factors that, that still need to be considered, even, you know, even though the engineering plan has been done. For instance, you, you mentioned that you were gonna put solar in all the houses, but living there, I know that if you're gonna do that, it appears to me that you're gonna have to cut down an awful lot of trees to make that solar effective. And I was, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if that's been, that was part of the engineering plan either. And my question to the, to the board is, when you, if you vote on this, let's see, you vote on it tonight, are you voting on this plan? Because it seemed, another, another thing that came up in the discussion was that, was that the houses are being sold for about forty percent of what they actually cost. And I know the money is coming from, so why is it so important to have six houses? Maybe four would be better in that area.
Liddar, will you speak for that?
Thank you. Right now, this is a preliminary plan. We've actually done more work on this plan than we typically do at this stage. It's a, you know, long process, and there's a lot of input. We bring our engineer to the zoning board hearings to answer these questions. We bring our engineer to meet with, you know, whatever stakeholders, at what point it's appropriate. So this isn't locked. I think that's important to know, this is a first step to start a discussion. We do show six homes because of the financial feasibility. At four homes, originally, we had been talking four to six. And that was part of the exploration, when we realized the amount of site work that would need to be done, all of a sudden, that per-unit cost with only four units is much higher. So this project does need six homes to move forward, it gets, unless there's a lot more money.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just wanna finish by saying that it, it looks nice on, on paper, but those are very small lots. And when you get right down on the ground with them, those are gonna be very close together. And, you know, I would cer- I think that there's a, there's an aesthetic consideration here, there's an environmental consideration here, there's a safety consideration here as well, in terms of all the cars coming in and out. So, you know, I just like, like to think that we should, we don't have to maximize just because if they could get permitted, that maybe we should consider some other things too, and make sure that, there's a tipping point where a project starts to not look so great. And I think, I think maybe four houses is that tipping point, and, you know, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, sir. Duncan?
Thank you, Duncan Berry, I'm from West Harwich. And I'd like to continue with the, the critique of the plan as given, primarily along economic lines and along cultural lines. Economic lines have to do with, there are a couple of different issues here. Number one, the idea of having deed restricted properties, six of them, in an area that's surrounded by historic properties, where the historic district that we're trying to put into place is all about incentivizing accommodating the historic property. So you get tax credits as well as material credits for improvements. The idea that you would incrementally grow probably at a much higher rate than the deed restrictions on the, the hedge houses seems to me kind of like a conflict for the community interest, the growth of the value of the properties in the, in the area. So I find that is kind of like a economically illogical thing, especially if you're gonna have a one-hundred percent sunk cost, or a two-hundred percent sunk cost in the value of the house. So in other words, three seventy-five and you're selling it for one forty or something? I don't understand the economic logic. For, not only internally, but also in terms of the externalities for the, for the rest of the community. Second thing is, is if you put a deed restriction, historical district deed restriction on the property, the ninety-seven, the Chase House, that's gonna artificially distort the value of the property as well. The historic district that we're trying to, again, put into place is the least intrusive. It has nothing to do with the management or stipulation of any paint colors, trimmings. It's just, it encourages you to become aware, to understand what the guidelines are, and if you abide with them, you get these bonuses, these, you know, returns on your investment. So there is no, like, manipulation or micromanagement involved here. And my concern is that if you put these stipulations of like a kind of a very granular nature into the RFP process, then you're gonna have what Habitat considers to be a success story, you know, this RFP for historic house, so they're making a gesture, but like in the Oak Street instance, it failed. This is not a win-win situation, in fact, this is not a model to emulate. I'd much rather see a proposal where there's a, actually they show how historic properties are actually discharged appropriately. And then, you know, what my, you know, another concern is, there were, as we know, in terms of the people that are circulating information about Captain's Row and Historic West Harwich and what have you, there are, there were three people that actually wanted to buy the property as it was. They were interested in historic nature, they wanted, they want, and they were not, I know of one couple who are neighbors, children of neighbors, who were, would not be shown the property because they thought, said it was not in, not in play, even though it's, you know, it's got a forced sale and reduced price out. And so, you know, I've got, you know, there may be internal issues, but, you know, if there is a party that wants to purchase, doesn't that solve everybody's problem? You know, at a market rate, if the market rate prices for these homes are, you know, just the one that sold, I think it was number eighty-seven, sold for three eighty-nine. So, I mean, why are we economically distorting the value of the properties, not respecting the people that are in the community that are trying to do this, and, you know, creating this kind of artificial hall of mirrors of property values? That's my thing, and, you know, to me, I think that's, that's enough. You know, I think the historic thing is being misrepresented here. It's not about control and controlling other people's property, it's actually liberating people to increase the value of the property voluntarily. So, I don't know, I think that there's a, some serious questions. I follow with Ralph. I think there are some economic issues in play that, there are some costs that are involved with these pleasant benefits, but there are some serious long-term costs, and those ought to be considered by the board, thank you.
Duncan, can you just tell us what Oak Street failed means? What on Oak Street failed?
Excuse me, was that what? No, I'm sorry, the, the historic property was torn down. There was an RFP process, and we lost, so, the reason why this is kind of an interesting thing, I think, Ms. Kavanaugh, is that this is one of four properties by the Chase family. Chase family is a family of national repute. It, as far back as nineteen ninety-two, this particular property was singled out as being meritorious of National Register of Historic Places status. It was recognized in eighteen ninety-seven as one of the key buildings in the town. You know, so it's not just like an arbitrary selection, we can just pull this like. You know, so it's not just like an arbitrary selection, we can just pull this like thing out, you know, just a piece of paper that comes out of nowhere. There's some really, real interest to this. And I mean, Chase family members still live here, you know, they still, live on twenty-eight. And we just think it's something that's worth holding on to, it's an important building, you know? And so, so I know, I understand that they, you know, that they're between a rock and a hard place. It's not a matter of, you know, disagreeing with them or disagreeing with the mission, it's just an economic thing that has cultural impact.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Peter?
Just, just a clarification, I, I think we heard before that there was a demolition permit applied for, on the property, for ninety-seven, and that you went through the one-year waiting period and hadn't done anything with it? So I guess my question is, you know, if that's the case, if Hetch decided tomorrow they wanted to bulldoze ninety-seven, could they do that?
Yeah.
I mean, if he decided that's the.
Technically, we could do that, but we have agreed, we're trying not to.
We're only going to speak from the microphone, okay?
Technically, yes, we could do that.
I understand. And I heard before someone say that, at least in their opinion, the value of the property is more if the building was torn down, that kind of thing. So if Hetch was looking at its mission, not as historic preservation, because that's really isn't your mission, it's housing and trying to recover your money on this property. I mean, there is a risk if we don't, if you don't move forward on this project, that tomorrow, whatever, the next day, whatever, you decide to go knock it down, right? And then we all lose. Right?
That's the board speaking.
Thank you.
Can I make one clarification, please? Ninety-seven does not have a deed restriction on the home, and there's no intent for Hetch as the owner to put a deed restriction on the home. Nor, ninety-three does not have a deed restriction either. We happen to rent to affordable income-qualified people, but we don't, there are no deed restrictions on the home for affordable housing.
Thank you. Next up?
Thank you. My name is Gail McElair, and I am also abutter to the property ninety-seven Main Street. And just a quick comment in regards to what was just discussed, as mentioned earlier by Duncan and speaking to different real estate agents, that there has been, there have been buyers ready to pay full market value for that house. So, you know, rather, if the project didn't go through, rather than tear it down when you have willing buyers or prospective buyers who are coming forward to pay the full price, it, that the option of tearing it down seems kind of strange. But anyway, that wasn't what I wanted to talk about. So I, I just wanted to follow up, I didn't really hear a response. I'm not sure about the zoning laws, I don't know, I know there are specific laws about building in a floodplain, building a dwelling on a floodplain, but I didn't know if it's acceptable to install a septic system in a floodplain? Is that okay? So it's okay to put a septic system in knowing that it's in a floodplain, and if it floods, I'm not quite sure what happens to the contents of that septic system? Our environmental laws have no issue, no, don't speak to that at all, or?
Charlene, could you answer that? Do you have it from the planning side? Or Chris, could you?
It's, it's not even a planning matter, it's a board of health matter. And this would have to go through, it, it has to comply with any state laws. There are septic systems in floodplains, and it is an acceptable practice.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was also wondering, you know, in my previous life, I was an assessor, so I've looked at a lot of appraisals. I'm not an appraiser myself, I will say that. But when I, I thought I heard, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I thought I heard, it sounded as if the appraisal that was done was on the two lots in their entirety as they stand today, with dwellings and the, the property behind. And then in order to ascertain the value of the back land, that total value was just divided in half. I've never heard of that before. I mean, typically, if you have a house with a very large backyard and you wanted to just sell that backyard, that backyard doesn't have, that vacant lot in the back doesn't have the same value as the front.
To an, to answer that, hold on one second, let's get, let's get you an answer to that.
Under the Chapter forty-B, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-B statute, the way the valuation process is done is you value the site as a whole under existing as-of-right zoning, reasonably anticipated variances, but it's the current as-of-right zoning. So those two lots were valued as single-family home lots, and that is the base value, because there is no six, there is no cul-de-sac with six lots without the forty-B. So you value it, the starting valuation is the as-of-right valuation, and that is, I believe, seven sixty CMR fifty-six. I can get Charlene the site for that.
Thank you.
Okay, that's interesting. So I suppose it's not your normal typical real estate value that you go in to do an appraisal? Okay. I think those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
I have a very short message. I hear conversations about rentals for Hetch, selling the house for Hetch, putting a deed restriction on Hetch's, this is their property. How do we get so far asunder that we're determining that you shouldn't be able to, you should only sell that if you're renting it, and you should only sell it if, they could do anything they want. They can tear it down, they can put forty apartments in, or they can sell us the back half. And to have people say, I want to tell you how to, how to sell your property, is bizarre to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waystack?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Just want to clarify a couple of things. There was a question about lot sizes and houses being too small for the area. There's a abutting subdivision over on Willoughby Street called Babary Lane, which will actually almost abut this, this process if it happens. The lots for the Habitat project will actually be larger than the abutting subdivision that's next to it. Mr. Barry talked about growth versus community. It's an excellent point, it really is, because today we did a housing summit up at the Council on Aging. One of the biggest things that came up on that topic, eighty-five people were there, by the way. One of the biggest issues that came up and the majority of the questions were about pine oaks. And they were about the fact that there is a minimum three to five to seven-year waiting list for affordable housing for seniors in this community. And there's no question, there's a cost of, of economic growth versus culture, the culture of a community coming together, a culture of a community caring about its residents and its taxpayers. And one of the costs of living in a community is that we take care of our neighbors, we take care of the residents in our community. I'm an assessor too, and I love growth, and I love to see that we expand our tax base. But at the same time, I understand that it's necessary to look after our neighbors in our community, and that when we need affordable housing, as we do desperately, desperately, because of the children and the young adults of Cape Cod leaving to go elsewhere where they can afford to live. So I'm willing to give up a little bit of economic growth in this community to find six affordable homes, that we can keep some of our youth, and frankly, some of our seniors may qualify for these houses and have an affordable place to live in a community that they grew up, they raised families, and that they would look for a place to retire. So I strongly urge the board, as your housing committee and your housing authority has done in terms of approving the use of these funds for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Sal?
Good evening. Let's have a couple of questions. First is, did I hear you say you would be applying for the Federal Home Loan Program monies? LaDara?
That is in our preliminary project performas. Again, this is a very early stage, we usually don't quite get into all these details, site details usually are in the zoning board, as are, you know, this kind of scrutiny on performas, but we have been very successful with Federal Home Loan Bank Boston. Yes?
Thank you.
And the second question is, I was curious about Life Initiative, if they're in on these conversations, is it okay with them that you're going to be subdividing, what essentially is their asset?
Actually, the Life Initiative is also a mission-driven organization that does funding for affordable housing, and they're very excited that Bob Murray's original intent of this land is going to be used for affordable housing. And they have full confidence and faith in Habitat as being one of the biggest developers of affordable housing on Cape Cod to get this project done. So thank you for that question, it's a good point.
Yep, yep. Then a couple of other questions. Speaking to the historic preservation, I believe that in April, when Hesh and Habitat first became before the board and they were rewarded, awarded the monies to do some studies and come back to us. And I believe that it was Hesh's charge to come back, bring us information to us on hiring a historic preservationist and how you would go about proceeding with that RFP. And this does become important because of what happened in Namskaket. Namskaket, it was supposed to be a historical home that was kept, it was, and they were, they put out the RFP for it, they found, somebody came forward to say that they could do this, they appeared before the Historic Commission, the Historic Commission agreed that this person was suitable. However, Habitat thought that that was not accurate, and the house was essentially demolished. And I, I understand about the right for the demolishing of this, I mean, you could do this any day, you don't have to say this to us, we just kind of want to get at the truth here, so we understand what we're dealing with. My further concern with the RFP is, I understand, not about the plume, but there was an oil spill on ninety-seven Main Street for which there was a, an environmental report. And so I'm concerned that if that is on the back of that property and this RFP is on that property, who really will want to buy it? It's kind of in jeopardy. The last part I have to say is that since the beginning, I've hoped that affordable housing and historic, I guess, goals could work together. I say that because I, I know that Habitat International has a specific subdivision that works with historic properties to make it into affordable housing, that they have a program called Habitat's Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. And off the website, it says this, "If we want to truly lift up an entire neighborhood, we need to understand the hopes and the aspirations and tailor our plans to fit that vision." And that includes, they go on to say, that historic preservation can create a healthy environment, and actually Habitat has done this to great degree in other projects. I'm hoping that we can get to that point, because what it does, it leverages both the assets that historic housing can bring and the assets that affordable housing can bring. One last point, goal number five of the Board of Selectmen, subset three, says that the town will help support public participation with Habitat and with Hesh, building on consensus and project direction and implementation. And I'm hoping that that goal is really reached and you really define for us how that might work. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan, follow-up?
Yep. Just, just a quick follow-up, I just want to correct the record. I, what I said was not about deed restrictions to be imposed, it was for the, I was talking about the cost of the deed restrictions that are listed as part of the Habitat properties. Okay? I think that that is a problem, because that determines the value, the increase of value of the house upon sale is limited, right, to a certain percentage? Which means that every dollar that's reinvested by the owner goes away from the percentage that they can win on a sale, a transaction in the future. To me, I believe, with all due respect to Mr. Waystack, that actually does handicap somebody who does have an affordable housing issue, and that they want to be able to make their return on investment. I think that that actually goes against the very culture that he's talking about. Also, I was saying, I was against the idea of a deed restriction for the historic side. I don't think that there should be that. It's not part of the historic district thing. You know, it, you know, we would like as a good neighbor to do that, but that was my thought, is it, was that actual deed, those stipulations that turned away buyers. Right now, we've got somebody that are people, three buyers that want to buy it as it is. So to me, I'm talking about liberating these restrictions and allowing people to gain and allowing the community to grow kind of, kind of spontaneously and naturally, the way the real estate market normally works without these distortions. That's the correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo?
Just before I forget my thought, I just want to follow up on what the gentleman just said. Vote the money tonight, let these people move forward with the plan, so in fact, Hetch can get that subdivision line defined, and so they can move forward and sell the property. I don't care if you have fifteen buyers lined up, there's nothing you can sell them until you have a defined property line. And right now, these two agencies are at a standstill with that. So direct response to what the gentleman just said, that's why you need to move forward on this tonight, so they can in fact get those defined lines and sell, move forward in selling those properties. I was given the minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, I just want to briefly read that it was moved by Mr. Lamontia to provide Habitat with thirty-five thousand dollars to begin their study towards their project, and up to twenty-five thousand dollars to Hetch for the same activity, and also provide our view that we are much in favor of this project, given that everything works out for the forty-B plan and the historic conservation of the Chase Building. It is an important part of the study. It was seconded by the chair, I don't think you were the chair at the time, Mr. McCaskill, and it was voted unanimously by this board. So let's not forget what we're being, or what you're being asked to do tonight. You're being asked to award Habitat for Humanity monies from our housing.
Trust fund.
Thank you. Fund, which is monies that's been being collected by the cell tower so that we can do things like this. And it's being awarded to them to purchase that piece of property, less the two historic buildings on twenty-eight. That's what you're being asked to do tonight. And I hope, because there's not enough money in the funds this evening, that whoever makes the motion, makes the motion that the funds not be transferred until the full amount or maybe portions of it can be transferred. But obviously, we, the motion has to be made so that the money is in fact coming from the funds when it is allocated there. I encourage you to go ahead and do that and move forward. They've obviously done a lot of work, and they've certainly answered your questions in the motions that you put forth back in April. So the whole historic conversation, I'm sorry, I, I really don't think it had a place here this evening. You're being asked to fund, to purchase those lots for those six homes for Habitat. So thank you.
Thank you. What?
Just a quick follow-up, I just need some clarification. LaDara said that you're in the, you're in the preliminary stages, and then you said you were thinking four to six houses, and you, that, I inferred from that that four to six is still something that's on the table, but then after that, you said, in order for this project to go forward, you have to have six houses. So could you please tell me which, which one of those is, it is?
Originally, when we were here without a site plan with concept, we were saying four to six houses. As we went through the site planning, the number is six. Part of the community process, the local initiative program application process, going through the zoning board, that is the typical venue for discussions about traffic, about density, about setbacks, about trees and solar, about environmental reports that, and just for the record, that oil tank was remediated, that was back in, it's actually on ninety-seven, I believe, if I'm recalling those environmental reports right, and it was remediated to the standards at the time, which have since changed. It was an oil tank. And all those issues come up during the zoning board process. So I appreciate the board's patience today with some really good questions that create a strong and best project for a community that a zoning board typically hears. At this point, Habitat is proposing six homes.
So are you saying that if, if for some reason the authorities, zoning board, and the other people involved say that four is really all that's appropriate, that you'd still go forward with the project?
I can't speak for what a zoning.
I can't speak for what a zoning board may or may not say. And there are, there is a whole process with 40B where the applicant proposes something and a zoning board can ask for certain conditions, so long as the conditions aren't uneconomic. And that's a probably three or four public hearing process. We want to be very direct. We've tried to be honest throughout this project. Six homes works with our numbers now. I mean, we had some questions from the board about the, it's an expensive program. I mean, building affordable housing is expensive. This is where, this is what we are proposing.
Thank you. Chris, you had mentioned the 228,000 was the balance of the, of the fund?
That's correct.
And, and you've only spent 6,000. It sounded like you spent 6,000 has come out of that.
Approximately. There may be some pending invoices.
Planning on spending the entire 35,000?
If we don't spend it, we will happily give it back.
Okay. And the, at the replenish rate, 39,000 a year, if Brooke, Brooke is correct?
Yeah, I'd like to verify that, Mr. Chair. I think it's appropriate for the board to, you know, to Leo's point, from a finance perspective, I can't approve a contract that's insufficient funds for. So, I think there's already protection there. But to have that added protection, you put that in the motion that, you know, none of these contracts will be awarded until such money is in the account, I think is perfectly reasonable.
And until we are permitted. I think that's an important check and balance and creates the community venue, the public hearing to talk about some of these details. Right now, we're at a concept level.
Thank you. Follow-up from the board on any, any of the information? Peter?
Just to be clear, I think that the 35 and the 25, although they may not have spent, they're committed at this point in time. They will be spent when it's appropriate to spend. And for instance, the RFP doesn't happen till later.
Till later in the process.
But I think because we have committed to those, you've got to sort of back those out of this, whatever it is, 228, whatever. And we have to look at going forward from where that number ends up being with the replenishment rate, to the point at which we can say the sale can happen, I think.
Julie?
I think, just for clarification, I think you said the front property was not deed restricted, right?
Thank you, yes. The front property will be in the 40B process, the market rate properties. There was discussion, actually, I should let Hetch talk about the discussion of the historic preservation restriction because there are two restrictions here. The back properties will be restricted. That's a core part of the Habitat affordability program. Without that restriction, they can get sold for 300, 400. And then, why is the community investing that money? The homes are forever affordable and that, that is key. So, our homes are deed restricted. If that can't happen.
That's not right.
It, it's not a fair use of funds.
Thank you.
And by the way, it's my understanding that the, the homeowners, the buyers, are made very well aware during the whole process that they are deed restricted and what the complications are. You can't just suddenly decide you want to sell it three years out for whatever you want to sell it for. Okay? I do, one, one question to clarify, and that is, Richard Waystack mentioned, you know, the community and, you know, Harwich, et cetera, et cetera, which, you know, is great. The question is, when it comes to eligibility for folks who can apply to be in these houses, what, what restrictions are there? What's the pool of applicants potentially? Or where do these people come from, I would say? You know, that kind of thing.
People come from our towns. The people come from our communities. They are folks earning at or below 60 or 65% of median income. Most often, we will, Habitat will apply to the state for a local preference. The state can award up to 70% of the units to be for local residents, which would be live in Harwich, work in Harwich, children attending Harwich schools.
And what's your experience been in local communities on the Cape in getting to 70%, I'll just say?
You know, it's, it's amazing. You know, people apply for homes because they need a home. Personally, sometimes I think the local preference is a tough thing because I've worked with families, actually in Harwich, in a previous program, the Buy Down Program. I worked with a family that was an off-Cape family. They'd moved off-Cape because they couldn't find housing. They had children. They wanted to move back home to be close to their parents. They would have been categorized as non-local, but they were about as local Harwich as it gets.
Okay, but there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee that four out of six of these will be Harwich residents.
There will be a low, we will apply for local preference. You can tell I'm very careful.
And tired. I just want, no, I, no, I just want to say that.
Thank you for that vote of confidence.
No, no, no. But statistically, to the point, DHCD in every instance, and Liddara writes a beautiful case to the state, why local preference should be granted, which is something really towns have responsibility to do. But generally, Liddara will work with the town housing plans that have brought together a lot of statistics. We make the case to DHCD and DHCD has always granted us that 70% preference. And so, we have always had local residents who fill that 70% preference. And if anything, we exceed that because once you do the local preference, you put the locals into the open pool and then either locals or outside. I didn't mean that, excuse me, in terms of, so anyhow, we always meet or exceed that 70%. In theory, they could say, oh, you haven't made the case for local preference. But in every instance that we've requested it in our history, they have granted it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While this is fresh in my mind and your mind, maybe in the future, the Board of Selectmen may want to take up the LIP program, the Local Initiative Program, because it is, to my understanding, that that is a caveat that the Board of Selectmen can add to the LIP program, asking that the developer file for this petition for local preference.
We are more than happy to make that promise here and now, that we will apply for the 70% local preference. It is on approval of DHCD and as Vicky says, we do always get that approval. That is something very easy for us to say now.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so the request before us is to support up to $240,000 from Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a project at 93 and 97 Route 28. It's a pleasure, the board.
Is that the right number?
Yes, it is 240. Our purchase and sale agreement is for 240.
Anyone care to make a motion on this?
I'll second it.
Oh, he's going to make, he's going to make.
Somebody's got to make a motion.
Peter, you make it. You have all the details.
I have all the details?
Sure.
All right, let me try this. I will make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of up to $240,000 from the, what's the fund called?
Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Affordable Housing Trust Fund as those funds are actually available to support the purchase of property at 93 and 97, what's called 93 and 97 Main Street in West Harwich.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to support the request for up to $240,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as funds are available for the project at 97 and 93 Route 28 West Harwich. Any discussion?
Just one comment. I, I think, Chris, it'd be helpful if we could figure out about when that should come to be, that we have enough money so that they could understand what they have to do.
We'll do that.
We've, we've talked.
We'll do that.
Leo?
Mr. Chair, could I just respectfully ask that someone maybe amend the motion to include that the person asking it for it is the Habitat because the motion didn't state it, who you're giving the money to?
Yeah.
Thanks.
For Habitat, yeah, of course. For Habitat. So, moved and, moved and seconded to support up to $240,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the project at Route 97 and 93 Route 28 by Habitat for Humanity. Any more discussion? All in favor? No?
I just say something. I think it's very important, a very important fact here is, I think, that now that the lot lines are sort of defined, you kept, I think, as we discussed last time, you kept the roadway to the west side of the property. The 93 property, I believe, is not historic. I mean, it doesn't look historic to me. But the potential is there to preserve the Chase House. And I think that's, that's what's driving me on this and that, you know, we have a project before us that can help with affordable housing. If we do this right and everybody can get their cooperation going here, there is an opportunity to preserve that Chase House. And my fear is that if we don't all cooperate, then we're going to lose that asset at some point in time. But I, I take this as a positive step. Some people may not, but I take it as a positive step as regards 97, so.
Thank you, Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do item C, too.
What?
Mr. Chairman?
You've got to do item C, the sign the letter of support.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Next, next up, that's why I was just getting ready. Next up is, not quite.
You can't come back yet.
Next up is a request from Habitat for Humanity to sign a letter of support for LIP application for project at 93 and 97 Route 28 West Harwich.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
What floodplain level was involved?
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
That's it for them.
Okay. All right.
Is it appropriate to get a signature on this before I walk out of here?
Wait, I have to clear a room.
Oh, it might be, yeah.
Yeah, I have to clear a room.
You can leave it and then she can pick it up in the morning?
Pick it up in the morning?
I actually am hoping to FedEx it out and just see if it's rolling, if you don't mind.
I can run down and make a copy.
Okay. Leandra, just hang around for a while. I'm going to get on to the next topic. So, next up on the agenda, yeah. I'm going to give Mr. Wilkins some time to walk outside. Okay, we're going to continue our meeting, so if you can talk outside.
No kidding. Very long. You didn't owe him any money to your brother, so.
Does she need just Mike? Do you need just Michael or?
I have a question about that.
We're going to continue our meeting, so if you guys can go out. Thank you. So, next up on the agenda is Board of Selectmen, FY17 Goals and Objectives. It was put in there, again, there's really no conversation on this, other than there's some to-be-determined for dates and there's also an order of priority that Chris had asked for, if we could go in and prioritize ourselves. So, if there's no, is there any? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, just two things, Mr. Chair. I did take an opportunity to go through the, the ones that the board had and kind of made my recommendation on the department assigning. So, just so the board would have that information, I, I did that.
Great.
So, I just wanted to make sure that that was available to you.
Thank you, Chris. Obviously, we will review those.
Thank you.
Any conversation on that? I mean, it's getting to be a late hour. I think I'm going to bring this back next week for any real discussion, but. Anything you want to add on that, Chris, at all?
No, I, I just, I have undermined just my goals and objectives. I mean, I did put that in, you know, so I was going to just mention that quickly for that, but I don't have anything else on, on 17. I do have something on the budget message, so whenever you're ready for the budget.
Okay. There's no discussion right now on our goals and objectives. Can we go to FY18 budget message? I guess I'll start with Angelo on this.
I'm going to steal this because we need one more document. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Michael. I just, I just have a, a question about being specific. And the last, the last sentence in here talks about, if I can get to it, the budget that was set for the middle school. And I believe when that vote was taken, there was a number of either 125 or 150,000 dollars.
125.
Oh, either one of those as being the number that is, that is the target. And I think that since this is a budget message and you're dealing with numbers, we need to use that number in there. And we also, because we don't do real budgets by, normally in our accounting, by department, that we have to make arrangements that the finance director provides sources and use document for the middle school quarterly or whatever timeframe is, is needed. For example, we do have things called department budgets that we have show in our books, which are required by the state. But there are, the department doesn't even carry its own benefits packages. That's in a different place. And the DPW gets charged for this, not the activity. So, if you want to know what it's costing to do something, you do it through a sources and use document. It doesn't change anything. So, that's why I suggest is that it be more specific because, you know, the lowest possible level is, you know, I think is zero. And other people are going to think it's $10 million.
Peter?
Mr. Chair, as you know, I provided you with some comments. I guess your suggestion back to me was, well, maybe I should pass out to the whole board my comments so they could look at them. I know the hour is late, but I guess seven copies, I guess. You know, things that we have in here at the moment that say, here's an item, the department should plan for inevitable increased benefit costs, that is healthcare. I don't know what you do with that. I don't think it says anything. What do they do? So, I put something else in there that talked about that. So, and I just went, you know, I went through and I think corrected some of the wording and whatnot. I made it clearer. But again, it's getting late. I know we need to pass something tonight, but, you know, under the, the part-time hours not increasing, I added at the end, in no case shall a part-time position transition to a full-time benefit eligible position. I think that's important. On the healthcare thing, I said, continue to be proactive in managing the costs of benefits, primarily healthcare, so as to minimize cost escalation instead of what says in here now, the department should plan for inevitable increased benefit costs. So, I just think it's important. I think under OPE, we, we need to add, need a plan to match current and future obligations with an ongoing reserve fund set aside or something to that nature. There aren't that many changes suggested, but I think it's important. Quite frankly, I view this as the most important document the, the Board of Selectmen put together and vote on a yearly basis. I do know we're under time pressure to do something here, but I would hope you would consider those modifications.
Okay. She now?
I guess I'd like a little time to read these modifications before I comment.
Julie?
I'm looking at them quickly, but I don't really see a substantial change. I'm looking quickly, but I, I'm looking at, say, no new hires. Any proposed new position, this is all the same until we get to, or is it? Come in by explanation. No increase of hours for part-time employees is what we have. Any proposed hours for a part-time employee shall be supported by a direct increase in department revenue? This is a little bit different here? But I don't, in, in no case shall a part-time position transition to a full-time benefit eligible position is the change. But we, I, I don't know. I, I read this to say the same thing, so I'm just trying to read it quickly off the cuff.
Chris, while she's.
I was just going to say, I, I think from a timing perspective, and we're going to look it up, that, you know, if, if the board was to vote this next week, I have to have the budget instructions out, I think, by November 1st. So, we do have a little bit of, a little bit of time. Just in terms of, you know, some of the substantive, you know, comments, I am a little bit concerned that if, if we're going to ask for any new positions, that the only way a new position could be created is if they offset by the, the revenue. There's really only three departments that can, can meet that goal. And that'd be Water Department, Golf Department, and I'm trying to, and what?
Harbor.
And maybe Harbor. So, how can we, if those aren't areas where we want to expand the organization, then why would we expand just in those areas? So, I, I think the board should think about, you know, that element. One of the things that I have done since I've been here has been very deliberative about, you know, where the need is and where the, where we need to fill. And I definitely agree, and I know, Mr. Chairman, I've said this to you numerous times, that we need to slow down on the number of new hires, that that is going to catch up and that is going to hurt us. I think in this case, you know, if, if new hires are going to be considered, and they're going to be, as an example, in the Fire Department, it may be a third of that salary could be offset. it may be a third of that salary could be offset by ambulance revenues. So, I guess I would like to have a little bit of flexibility, that I'd like to be able to present different things, and I certainly will present. I could, you know, get from the departments what they want, and normally, I make significant cuts before it ever comes to the board, quite honestly. But I think it's important for the organization to know, what are the needs of the organization? And then administration usually cuts that down to try to live up to the guidelines that are given. But just on that, and then the only other one is, I did have on the no case, the part-time transition to full-time. There was a case since I've been here, in which someone was hired at 19 hours. They were consistently working over 19 hours, the department had needed that person to work over 19 hours. And I am legally compelled to offer that person benefits, if that practice exists. So, there's at least been two or three cases, as I sit here now, where that would happen. And I'd hate to have the board come to me and say, "Well, you violated our policy." Well, I didn't intend on violating it, department head may have scheduled too many hours, and now legally, I'm in a bind. And trust me, department heads know, 19 hours means 19 hours. But as much as I like to say that that is what we put out there, and it's not always what's followed. So, I just wanna at least say, from my perspective, that does create a little bit of a, an issue for me. Budgetarily, if we're gonna take a part-time position and move it to higher, where they're gonna be benefited, I have, I think it was Selectwoman Sebula, had asked me to do that my first year here. Every budget that I've presented, that we've increased the hours and gone above that threshold, we've identified. So, maybe not my very first budget, because I think I started when the budget was in the middle of the process, so I kinda had to just get it done. But since then, I've been very meticulous about doing that, 'cause I was asked to do that, so.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, I have no, I have no problem bringing this back next week, because you suggested it. Peter, could you email the board the yellow line copy, just, oh, no, you handed it out. Never mind.
No, 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 the one I sent out wasn't yellow line.
Okay, if you can hand out the yellow line copy, I mean, send out the yellow line copy.
It does say that it's supposed to be done by tonight.
Oh, it does, but...
For the first Tuesday.
Yeah, and last year and the year before, we didn't quite get them in until towards the end of October, so... The other piece of this that I'm, you know, maybe I'm a little confused about is, isn't this a budget message, not a budget ultimatum? I mean, isn't our request not to go over 19 hours for a part-time person? Can't you come back, if you have to come back?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I've taken liberties, and I have presented things that I believe are in the best interest of the organization. That's why, that's why we're here.
Which is what we hire you for.
And, you know, if you guys agree with me, then you do, if you don't... This board, you know, I didn't, I didn't ask for a position. You guys, on a Saturday, maybe in a weak moment, gave an additional position that I hadn't even advocated for. So, things are gonna happen as we go, so it is more of a budget message and not an ultimatum.
Peter?
You know, let's just take, for example, the one that says, no new hires, period. But then it goes on to say, any proposed new positions, you know, which are new hires, right? I mean, so...
So, we're saying no new hires, but if there is a new hire...
Yeah, exactly.
But if there is, if there is a request for one...
Yeah, I mean, I think that gives you latitude right there.
And that, I guess that's my sense. My sense is, I don't really see, Peter, I appreciate your edits, you know, they came to me late because you were traveling, but I don't, I don't read it any differently, really. I mean, I think we could sharpen up more words, but I don't...
Then let's eliminate the one that says, department should plan for inevitable increased benefit costs, 'cause I don't know what that means.
Yeah, just on that, you know, I wanna...
I think that's important, because, you know, to me, to me, a benefit is a benefit, it's either, is health? Health-related costs, what other benefits are there that they could increase?
What are you gonna plan, what's the plan?
Just in terms of that...
To budget, to budget.
To the point of the plan. You know, I think it's important for, the only thing a department head really can do is engage in wellness and things like that, that are gonna be instruments that would be helpful. You know, I asked to go on to the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, and we do have an initiative that's coming out to do a high deductible account of health insurance. It's those kind of bigger tools, quite honestly, that's gonna have an impact on health insurance. And you can read the minutes, I make more motions than I certainly do here. But it's John Kelly, the administrator, and Orleans and I, that have really been leading the charge of, we need to get health insurance under control, and putting some of those tools forward. But that's larger than, to be honest, it's a larger issue than just the town of Harwich. It's whatever, I think there's 58 groups in the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. But we are looking at that, and there are professionals that are available to us to study things that we can do to make health insurance more affordable. So, we are actively pursuing that.
Then maybe I'm misreading that, because when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking of, you know, let's try to pad the budget with the expected increase in costs of healthcare, which, whether they be a percent, like, that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, no, we budget, we budget for two things. We budget for the, we budget for the rate increases, so if it's 10 or 15 percent. And then the other thing we need to budget for is if we're gonna have increased personnel, like these new positions, three new positions. Theoretically, we need to have three new allocations in the budget for health insurance, because anyone over 20 hours, we're legally compelled to provide that.
Okay, so then that's...
Those are the two drivers.
Okay.
Peter, I mean, Chris, I think, you know, my sense on that is, we've heard now two or three times from you about the up-and-coming healthcare costs, increased healthcare costs. So, asking departments to plan for inevitable increased benefits costs, I don't see where that's off-base. Do you?
Okay, so I'm really confused, 'cause that's what I'm talking about, but the increase that, that overall, that, I'm not understanding this.
Not in the budget, that's what you're...
Try this, this is FY18 budget, right? Chris and his team are gonna put in whatever the benefit costs are appropriate for that budget.
Right.
No, I understand that.
I don't think we need to tell them that, but for departments to do that, the only thing they're gonna do is identify a body count, quite frankly, and who's eligible for insurance, or what their circumstances are. You know, Chris and Charlene, and probably Andy are gonna sit down and figure out what that all means, if put it in the budget.
But then, does that relate back to...
Yeah, we did last year, and again, at suggestion of the board, you know, what are the costs, the indirect costs related to health insurance that goes into a department? And I went, you know, spent some decent time figuring out, if you're in DPW, what are your indirect cost benefits? What's the health insurance, what are, and we put in six or seven different items. Actually, I think I had Charlene do a lot of legwork for me. So, a department head knows that for every dollar of salary, it's either 30 percent or 40 percent, I don't remember the exact numbers, that are related to those indirect costs that are benefit-driven. I didn't go into, you know, the cost of run the lights, you know, I mean, I could've really gone even more. I went pretty far last year, I don't wanna get myself extra work. But, you know, we looked at that, and department heads know, and we drive that message home. And I think this year, in some of the budgets we'll collect, I wanna get people thinking about personnel, and how many personnel have we had, what's been the growth over the last five years? FinCom had asked me to do that, I think that's a good exercise. But then also, now that we've done the research last year, to find out what are those percentages, we can get department heads to at least think or identify that, oh, if I have a million-dollar budget, 350,000 additional not in my budget is gonna be needed to support those people. And that, I think, is the point of what, I think, is the education curve, to make sure people understand that.
Okay, thank you.
I have no problem striking that one, that one line, Peter.
If you do that, I'm okay, let's just...
So, I have no problem striking that, anyone else have a problem striking, no?
No, that enhanced.
Okay, and now, you know, I can add some of the verbiage that Peter put in there tonight, and put a final to Chris tomorrow, if that's your preference, but if we could...
We'll vote something tonight.
I'd like to, to get it in on time.
And I think that's a great suggestion, to vote with the edits to be added, and then that way, we can be compliant with the charter, and be done by tomorrow.
Okay. I am a little confused with Angelo's request, or if there is a request. I know what you're asking for, but I don't know how to put it into a budget message. And I don't know why we would single out that building.
Well, let me tell you why. Because we had a vote to go forward and to do things in that building, and to watch the costs, that was part of the vote.
What building we're talking about?
Middle School.
Middle School.
Middle School. And the way we budget things and whatnot, if we don't know what the number is, it will go sky-high. 'Cause every time we don't have a number, which is a target for a budget, and all it says is, this is the number, rather than using words that say the lowest possible, whatever, that's the high number. Period.
I mean, if we can't, if we can't agree on something to add, Angelo, that I would just say, strike it, because at this point, this board voted to use the middle school. We voted a fee structure. We voted to stay inside of the 125,000. We're not gonna vote, or I'm not gonna vote, to change and start adding all of the indirects that we wanna add to...
So, right now...
So, Chris has said that he will stay inside of the 125,000. If you're asking for more than that to be in the budget message, specify what you want to put in there and make a motion.
I'm, I wouldn't like it to stay within the 125 that we were voted, and that's the total cost of what we spend on the middle school.
Chris?
So, just to be clear, the 125 is what's allocated to do utility-related activities related to that building? We do not cover, you know, when Sean goes over there and opens it up, when Recreation goes over there and opens it up. The insurance was actually budgeted in the insurance, we weren't offsetting that. So, the 125 is more for direct utility-related costs, and doesn't have any real salaries in that, because obviously, you know, we're not gonna have Carolyn assess her time and energy into that. So, when I say I'm gonna live within the 125 and come back to the board, if it looks like it's being very successful, and say it's very successful, you know, are there things that we should consider doing? And I'll bring back some options. But if I understand, the point is, are we supposed to calculate not only the 125, but all those other costs? Including, you know, quite honestly, am I supposed to do my time for how much time I've invested in doing the rate schedule? You know, I mean, we can, we can get to a certain level, and I don't think Angelo's going there, but...
Oh, I'm going there. I'm going there. The vote was to operate and keep that going, the school open and going, and to do various things, and to keep it under 125,000 dollars. That was the budget. That was the vote. I didn't vote it. I voted against that, by the way.
I know. It was a three-to-two vote, so...
And so then, then the other problem I have is, I know, quite frankly, that since the community center only earns 10 to 15,000 dollars a year, according to Carolyn, when she was here, on various rental things, that we're not gonna get a lot of rentals, I don't think, out of the middle school, do you? And I think...
You know what, this wasn't not part of tonight's discussion.
No, no, so I would actually suggest, at this point, we take that piece off of the budget message, and vote the budget message with those few edits. If Angelo wants to bring this back, then he can bring this back by request. But we, we did make a vote to use that building, we did set some rates to use that building. We, but what about offsetting income? Where's that gonna go? Is that gonna go back into it? So, it's 125 plus income?
Sure.
Alright, so we'll get back to the minutia of what you want to do.
It's not minutia.
It is minutia. And it's this building only that you're trying to do that on right now. So, I'm gonna end discussion on this. Let's put the, let's get a motion on the FY18 budget, and we are going to take out the budget set for the middle school ending paragraph.
And what was the other paragraph, Mr. Chair? There was two that we were gonna edit.
Department should plan for inevitable increased benefit costs.
Okay, so those two are gonna be taken out, right.
Peter, you ready to make a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move that we adopt the FY 2018 budget messages, with the exception that we're gonna delete the bullet, I even called, department should plan for inevitable increased benefit costs. And what's the last one?
The very last bullet.
Right, the very last bullet. And that the chairman be authorized to add any additional edits between now and tomorrow to the document, without dramatically changing things. We move forward.
Seconded that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the FY 2018 budget message, removing the last paragraph, and removing the department should plan for inevitable increased benefits costs, and allow the chairman to make minor edits by tomorrow. Any discussion?
Just one comment. I'm gonna vote against this, because I think we've convinced the public that we're operating against a certain budget. And if we don't do that, I think it's a real failure, and I think it does belong in the budget message. So, I'm gonna vote against the budget message.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Thank you. Action Item Register, additional items to be added. The Action Item Register, Peter, we talked about a couple times while you were away. There is one in there that they have, Chris and Charlene have been updating, if there's any additions that you can think of to that.
Okay, my only comment is, when something's completed, when do we take it off?
Well...
Are we gonna keep it on there?
Actually, I was gonna get to, we'll keep it on the list, but we'll say, status complete. Items that are done, we'll put status complete.
So, is there a way to put some color coding or something in here, instead of something, I don't know, we call it green or something, if it's done?
We'll do this.
Okay, alright, if you highlight it in color, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, there are new, new action items?
No requests that additional items be added to the list.
The only, the only additional one that I know of from tonight was the FY 16 audit presentation, but I don't know if that's, you know, that's coming.
What about Rich's thing?
Richard Houston, that would be request from a board member to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, I think things that are just going back on the agenda, we wouldn't add that to the list.
Okay, right. Okay, now moving on to Town Administrator's report.
We'll keep it... Hopefully, under 30 seconds, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
On the Action Item Register update, we had on there the perks, that you guys voted this evening to approve the hearing recommendations, so that is now status complete, that was one of the items that was still open. On the Town Administrator Goals for 17, I did put in there what I believe to be ones that I'm able to do, but I think it should do conjunction with what I recommend other departments are able to do. A couple question marks, so I'm not sure on that, what you wanna do. Pinewood Village condominiums, public water supply, the installation, a request came up at the last meeting about when was the Pinewood Village condominium made a public water supply? We did get an answer from the Water Department, and according to their records, it was June 1998. The community rating system recertification was signed, I believe by you, Mr. Chair, on Friday, completed by staff Thursday, Friday, and we got the word today that it's been approved. So, that was pretty quick for approval. And then the last comment is, I have received in the capital budget submissions, I finally had a chance today to kind of focus on those. So, I will hopefully have, in the next couple weeks, the summary sheet, that kind of gives the board a sense for the full capital request that we have. That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Chris, on the Town Administrator FY Goals and Objectives, I'm gonna put that back on for next week, when we have a lighter, and we'll have the discussion on that next week.
Again, by mutual consent, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I also have to make it so I have a realistic worklist that I'm actually gonna be able to accomplish.
Thank you. Selectmen's Report, Committee Vacancy List, I think we can dismiss with reading that tonight. Citizens Committee Vacancy Form, we did get a request from a citizen to change the name of it from Citizens Activity Record Form to Citizen Committee Vacancy Form. I don't believe that that's something that we really need to vote on, but it's a, but it is a name change, so...
I think we need to have a public hearing.
Does anyone object to calling it a Citizens Committee Vacancy Form, instead of a Record Form?
No.
Well, I have an issue with it, I guess, just thinking about it. Historically, we've asked people to check out the committees they're interested in. Doesn't mean there's an opening in any of those committees, so there's no vacancy necessarily, but they're getting on a list of, you know, potentially being interested, so...
Okay, I'm gonna bring that, I'm gonna bring that back for discussion next week.
Okay, good, it'll be fun.
Alright.
Right after the public hearing.
Next Selectmen's Meeting, Tuesday, October 11th, Monday is a holiday, so next Tuesday night. And anyone else for Selectmen's Report? Angelo?
No.
Julie?
No.
Chanel?
No.
Peter? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.